Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 5th, 2013, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Do we have a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda? Well, hold that thought for a second. I'm going to add one thing to the agenda. Under Special Recognitions and Presentations, we've got a presentation by Meg Newell from the Human Rights and Relations Commission, who's going to talk about a special event evolving around the book that we were given a couple of weeks ago called "The Thinking Man's Bully." So, we're going to have Meg come up and talk to us about that. So, that's one thing to add to Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. And then, I think that's it in terms of modifying the agenda. Member Bennett?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to add a brief item, Board and Commission Discussion, and I would defer to either Clerk or Manager as to where that should be placed in the agenda.
I think the best place for that would be at the end of Reports and Recommendations, so Item EFGH.
Then I would move approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carrie? All right. Now, next item we have to deal with from a business standpoint is the adoption of the consent agenda. We have -- Member Swenson wants to remove Item 4C. Member Brindle, 4D. Anyone else on the council wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda? All right. With the exception of 4C and D, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of 4C and D. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carrie? And first one up, Member Swenson, 4C, which is Resolution 2013-18, which is regarding a proposed lot division on Grove Street. Member Swenson.
I just had some questions about the division. There's some land around it to the west and to the north, and the land around it to the north has an address on it, but not a building. And the strip to the west is just a narrow strip. Can you explain to me what?
Member Swenson, members of the council, the strip of land to the west, I believe, is platted right-of-way for a future street that was anticipated to go to run north-south.
Okay. I didn't know if it was street or sewer, since it kind of leads down to that what area.
Yeah, it's just a platted right-of-way.
Okay. And is the lot to the north 50 -- is it 804-50?
Fifty-eight oh four.
Not developed, correct?
That's correct. It's a vacant lot.
Okay. But it's a build-able lot?
It is.
Okay. And then, my only other question, and it has nothing to do with the lot division, which I support, is if I look at where the corner lot, 5700, is built, if 5712 were to come down and be rebuilt, what would its setback have to be based on where that corner lot is?
The front yard setback?
Mm-hmm.
They would have to match the existing home at 5700.
Because it really couldn't ever do that and have a legal backyard setback.
That is correct, and that's one of the issues that we are looking at with the Planning Commission, that front yard setback, where you have to either average the home on either side or match the home if there's only a home on one side.
Right. Well, this is one of those odd circumstances, and because it was so obvious, I wanted to pull it just so that as we go into these issues ahead of time, this is a very good example of what happens when one house is built close, and then a house, probably the corner one was built later, and it was built back, and what that does to setback.
Yes, thank you for that. We're finding more and more of these on a daily basis, almost, in the Planning Department.
Yeah, I figured that. Then I would move this issue.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second on 4C, which is Resolution 2013-18. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carrie? And then, Member Brindle, the next matter is the proposed repairs, the scouring repairs on the Browndale Avenue Bridge.
Thank you. I understand that we need to proceed on this project this evening, and my questions aren't related to whether this project is necessary or not, but they're related to kind of how the situation occurred. I guess, first of all, and I've got a series of questions, so if you don't mind, I'll just go through them. How soon would the repairs begin, Wayne?
Commissioner Brindle, actually, they'd probably begin as soon as we receive their insurance certificate.
Okay.
They actually did drop off a backhoe over the weekend anticipating approval of the project, so that's what you see out there is a backhoe. And like I say, we're not going to allow them to do anything until we get their insurance certificate.
Okay. Is the -- what we're talking about, for those of you in the audience and out in your homes, the new Browndale Bridge, which was new a couple of years ago, there's an underlayment just beneath the bridge that has kind of come apart, and it's -- it looks like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks to me like it's an erosion control measure, but it's -- it was meant to kind of lay in there as a blanket, so to speak, but it has come apart. And is -- do you think -- do you have any way to know if it's negligence or whether they didn't complete the project in the first place?
Actually, what we're doing is we're -- we asked the consulting engineer, which is TKDA, is the consulting engineer, to look at their design of it. And so, they've looked at the design of it and looked at the amount of water that was going through that dam in 2011. If you recall, at the winter of 2011, we had a lot of snow.
Yeah, we did.
And we were preparing for flooding along the creek. And so, we did have a slower snow melt, but then we had flows virtually all summer long that caused the damage to occur. So, what we think is the velocity is that they designed it to, that they exceeded it during the flows that they had on it. And then, there's another component on it, is what you see in the photos is there's a, what they call cable concrete mats.
Mm-hmm.
And those cable concretes are about a foot-by-foot dimensioned on those squares, and then they're connected with a stainless steel cable. And what we figured what happened was it became undermined, and then the vibrations tore the cables apart, because those were designed, like I say, to those other types of flows. We are -- have been talking with the vendor, Royal Concrete, who supplies that cable concrete, put them on notice, and actually had sent them a letter, asking them to look at this and, you know, help us out and recouping the costs. We've asked TKDA to get back to us on that also. We haven't sat down with their city attorney yet, but we're doing a lot of these items up front to go back to those two individuals or two companies to recoup the costs. And then, actually, tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with Eric Evanson with the Minion Watershed District, who actually had -- the Watershed District had given us a $50,000 grant when we put this in originally. And so, they've already been put on notice that we have an issue here on the main line and to help us out if we are unsuccessful with those other two entities.
Okay. Is there a way to inspect the work of the contractor, so we have someone's opinion that it's going to withstand another 2011 melt?
Yes. Actually, they did go back and actually designed it to us at no cost. We're not putting back in a cable concrete in that area, so actually, it's going to be oversized riprap to look just like the boulders that we had.
Okay.
Just downstream of that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it should withstand higher, you know, flows if we had another big melt like we had in 2011.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Just wanted to clarify some of those things for my own satisfaction. And with that, I will move the bridge repairs for Contract Engineering 13-6 NB.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on item -- Agenda Item 4D, which is the Browndale Avenue Bridge Scouring Repairs. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carrie? And next, we are moving on to the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. We've got Meg Newell with us this evening. Nice to see you, Ms. Newell. If you would give us your name and address when you come up to the podium, and then you can tell folks again that you're with the Human Rights and Relations Commission.
Is this okay? Am I on?
Yeah, that's the best one to be at.
Thank you, council members, city staff, fellow residents of Edina. My name is Meg Newell. I live at 6008 Wooddale Avenue, and I am a member of -- a commissioner on the Edina Human Rights and Relations Commission, which we refer to, and I refer to, will refer to here tonight, as HRRC. I'm here tonight in place of Lisa Fensness, my fellow commissioner, who's the co-chair of the HRRC's spring event, which we are cosponsoring with several community organizations. Lisa is at home tonight, under watch, due to a possible concussion from a fall on the ice earlier today, and she asked me if I could come in her place, as she was planning to come during the community comment, to announce the event that she's worked very hard on, and she wanted to announce it tonight and make sure everyone in the city also will be here again next month, probably, as well. The event will be Monday, April 22nd. It's a gathering of Edinas for a discussion of the spring's Edina Reads book, "A Thinking Man's Bully," by Michael Adelberg. For people listening in, it's A-D-E-L-B-E-R-G, Adelberg. We're happy to announce that beloved retired Edina High School teacher and book club leader, Betsy Kussler, will lead the discussion. The HRRC selected bullying as a theme to discuss two years ago with our Edina Secrets Program, and we're continuing that discussion with this event. Now, it might be easy for some people to say, "Oh, another event or discussion on bullying." As a member of the HRRC, I can tell you that bullying is still very much a part of our society. It is a corrupting and warping force, not just on the playground, but in the workplace, in our entertainment, and in our political systems, even among our elected officials in whom we place such trust. The most insidious kind of bullying to address is the kind that draws no blood, but rather bruises the victim's psyche. These bruises kindle the many mental and physical illnesses we see in our society today. As humans, we're all bullies at one time or another, just as we've all been victims. There are individual victims, and there are social structure victims. Our beautiful American government system is founded upon the belief that through fair government, we can tame the bully, that by guaranteeing due process for the individual and for minorities, be they interest groups or votes, we can avoid mob rule. That's when a bully or a mob of people led by bullies denies others their human rights, their rights to be heard, to represent themselves, to face their accusers, the right to be recognized as more than what others, who may be ignorant or ill-informed, say about you. The bully thrives on public shaming to feel better about herself. The bully thrives on hearsay and speedy assessments about others, in not taking the time to know the victim or get the other side of the story. The bully is in a hurry to dismiss differences as liabilities, rather than the gifts that they are. The book we have chosen is a very compelling short novel about the one thing all bullies eventually have in common, whether they admit it or not, and that is regret. Regret at having rushed to judgment. Regret at having diminished a person in the eyes of another for the thrill or kick of temporary power. Regret at having contributed to the destruction of another human being, whether it be the individual's physical or mental health, or the victim's reputation and place in society. The book we have chosen is written in first person by an upper-middle-class guy from the suburbs. We all know this person in school. We knew him, and maybe even know him or her now at our workplace or neighborhood. This guy or girl is not necessarily a physical bully. The protagonist of "A Thinking Man's Bully" is rather a very intelligent man who is coming to terms with how through his verbal wit and smarts, he has inflicted severe pain on many people in his life. Copies of the book are available for borrowing from Edina Library through funds from the Human Rights and Relations Commission. I urge everyone to read this book. If you can't come to the event, read the book. Again, the event is Edina Reads, Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 to 8:30, in the fireside room at the Edina Senior Center. The book is "A Thinking Man's Bully" by Michael Adelberg. Our cosponsors for the evening will be Edina Community Foundation, Edina League of Women Voters, Edina Senior Center, Friends of Hennepin County Library, Friends of Edina Library, Edina High School, Edina Community Education, and the Edina Resource Center. We continue to do great things at the Human Rights and Relations Commission, and I invite fellow residents to come to our meetings. Contribute to our discussions by email, letter. All are welcome. All are welcome to help us make Edina a great place to live and work and do. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg.
Thank you.
Any questions for Meg? All right. Thanks. All right. We're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We had a public hearing potentially scheduled, but we need to continue it. It's a variance appeal involving a property at 5801 Crescent Terrace. Is there a motion to continue that public hearing to February 19, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to continue the variance appeal on 5801 Crescent Terrace to February 19, 2013. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carrie? Next, we are in the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and address a concern with the council? You'll have three minutes. It should not be anything that relates to an agenda item this evening. So, I don't hear anyone, and I don't see anyone coming forward. We'll move on to the Reports and Recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter in front of us tonight is, in that portion of the agenda, is 8A, which is Sketch Plan Review on the Seidel property at 4412 Morningside Road. Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. Before you is a request for a Sketch Plan Review for a subdivision known as Acres Dubois up in the Morningside neighborhood. The goal of this review is to obtain feedback from the city council. They've -- the applicant has been before the Planning Commission and received feedback. They're going to compile all of that, the recommendations and feedback that they receive, and then come back and go through the formal public hearing process with a preliminary plat, again, based on your comments, over the next couple of months following tonight's meeting. So, this property is located, as I mentioned, in Morningside. It's the far west end, right along the St. Louis Park border. Morningside borders the site to the south, Latel Street to the north. The applicant, the Seidel family, they reside in the two existing homes. Frank Seidel, who you'll hear from in a couple of minutes, resides in this location here. His mother, Iris, lives in the property to the south along Morningside. The site is a little over three acres in size. The -- back in December, the applicant submitted a request to the Planning Commission for an eight-lot subdivision. It was proposed for, as a cul-de-sac off of Morningside Road that would have six lots and then two lots that would gain access off of Latel Street. The Planning Commission at that time asked the applicant to reconsider subdivision of this property, consider potentially smaller lots or something that fits more in character with the Morningside area. Want to back up for a minute, too. The plat itself, where the eight lots comes from, is this conforming plat that you see on the screen. The first exercise that the applicant did was how to subdivide the property that meets all of our zoning ordinance requirements. And this plat does meet all of our minimum lot size, area, and depth requirements. So, in a sense, they're entitled eight lots, an eight-lot subdivision of the property. However, based on, the applicant does not wish to construct that plat, rather, they would like to preserve some of the mature trees along the west lot line, and there's a steep slope area right in here. You can see it here. This is that steep slope area. And constructing a street that would connect Morningside to Latel would more or less eliminate all of the trees and impact that slope dramatically. So, that's where the -- that's where the eight lots comes in. The applicant then came back, based on that recommendation, to the January 23rd Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission considered the three alternatives. The applicant is here to present those alternatives to you. Two of them are ten-lot subdivisions, and one is kind of a modification of that plat that you saw on the screen. In your packet is the original staff report, in which staff was recommending approval, minutes from the Sketch Plan Review, and letters from adjacent property owners. And as pointed out by Councilmember Bennett, there were a few letters that were not included in your staff report, and those were handed out to you this evening. So, with that, I could introduce Frank Seidel, and he's going to present the three alternatives, and staff would be glad to answer any questions as we move along as part of the Sketch Plan Review.
Good. Thank you, Director Teague.
Do they have any of these? Yes. Okay, so I need to hand those over. Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Seidel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. As--
And would you introduce yourself and your address, please?
Oh, sorry. Introducing myself. Frank Seidel. I live at 4232 Oakdale.
Since you're not the only Seidel in the room--
And I'd like to introduce the rest of the Seidels here, too. Wife Carol, sitting in the blue-purple sweater. Brother Phil, Dr. Phil, is in the green shirt, and my sister Tina is in the blue vest. And another person to introduce, just in case we need some questions answered, is my civil engineer, Pete Knabli, and he works for Terry Engineering and has helped me a lot throughout this process. Okay, so, just a reminder, this is a Sketch Plan Review that was asked for by the Planning Commission when we went to make our first proposal. There was a question about whether or not we shouldn't slow down a little bit, take a look at the uniqueness of this property, see if there's some other alternatives that might be -- that might make sense. And since we're not in any super-big hurry, fortunately, we said that might not be a bad idea. So, the family backed down and said we'd like to take a few more minutes and take a look at it. So, just a couple of facts about what we're doing here. We're the Seidel family. We've lived in this property in Morningside for 50 years now, so we are long-term residents of the community. We do understand what the community is all about. We were actually in the community before it was part of Edina. What we're trying to do here as a family is we're trying to create a legacy for my father, Franklin Dubois Seidel, which is where Dubois Acres comes from. And I know that people didn't really understand what the name was all about, and we're just -- think of it more as a code name. I think it might be a little advanced for a name of the property or whatever for the Morningside area. It's a family code name for what we're doing here. My dad always liked the idea of lots. He liked the idea of room for kids to play, lots of trees and grass, and privacy and serenity were big for him. So, the family is trying through its -- what we're doing here is going forward with trying to keep his legacy involved in this and keep some of those entities involved in our plans going forward. My mom, on the other hand, who currently lives on the property, lives on the south side, her goal is basically to maximize the value. She wants to pass this on to her children. She wants to make sure that the maximum value of the land and her estate gets passed on. And I got involved in this as the lead on it through her. She's been harping on me for about a year and a half now to do something about it. I finally acquiesced, and we got the family together and decided that we should go forward with the project. I think we started with the city about six months ago, and I want to thank Mr. Teague for all the help that he's done there. Our main goal is to maintain the uniqueness of this property, and we looked at a bunch of different ideas on how to do that. Thought about hiring a development company. We thought about selling off to a developer. We weren't comfortable with either one of those, because we thought it was really important for us to stay involved as long as we possibly can. We think that we can control some of what happens and try to create that uniqueness and maintain that uniqueness. So, one of the things that came up at the Planning Commission meeting and amongst the conversations that I've had with the neighbors throughout this process is that this whole concept of the character of Morningside. And it turns out to be quite a complicated concept. Having been a 50-year resident of Morningside, not entirely 50 for me, but the rest of -- some of my family members have been there for 50 years, you can get kind of house-blind to your neighborhood with that many years involved. So, I decided the best thing to do is to just take a walk, and I walked the neighborhood of Edina with a notebook and a camera and just kind of grabbed on to some facts. So, I've heard some things about Morningside that, to me, weren't making a lot of sense or were confusing. One of the things I'd heard was that the houses were all small, turn-of-the-century bungalows. Another thing I'd heard was that they all have garages in the back. Another thing I heard is all the lots are 50 feet. So, in my -- here's some of the facts that I gathered when I was walking around. First of all, there's about 633 houses in Morningside. I don't know if this is an exact count. Remember, I was walking around counting, so don't hold me to these numbers exact, but they're pretty close. When I was walking, I saw that 65 of these houses have been either rebuilt or heavily remodeled in the last few years. Tastefully done. They look really nice. I think they're a great addition to the neighborhood. But that means that really, greater than 10% of the Morningside area has already been rebuilt. What I also found was is that more than 35% of the houses had garages in the front. So, that kind of makes me wonder where this garage-in-the-back thing came from. A third of the community doesn't have sidewalks. I know that walkability is very important in our communities, and I just wanted to remind everybody that there's a large section of Morningside that does not have sidewalks. More than 35% of the lots are larger than 50 feet, so it's not a neighborhood comprised of entirely 50-foot lots. And then, there's the problem of the property that we're talking about, which is about a three-acre lot with a 7,000-square-foot house on it. It doesn't fit that mold at all. So, what I sort of challenged the Planning Commission and my challenge to the council is, what part do we copy? You know, it's a neighborhood -- it's a very, very unique neighborhood. It's eclectic. No two houses are the same. That's something maybe we should copy. And for me, it's always been an area that's been about community and neighborhood, and we need to try to maintain that part as best we can. So, just a reminder, Carrie already showed you this. The conforming concept that we came up with was an eight-lot concept. Morningside Road up here, Latel Street down here, Through Street, all lots conforming to the codes of the city of Edina. There's no variances necessary in this conforming concept. Some of the issues with that, many of the neighbors are opposed to it. I think you've seen a petition that was signed by many of the neighbors that don't agree with the Through Street. It completely changes the feel and character of this micro-neighborhood down here of Lower Oakdale, which has never had the Through Street go through it before. Creates the need for excessive grading on that hillside that Mr. Teague showed you in the picture. Eliminates a lot of the trees. We probably would need to put large retaining walls in, be a lot more traffic, and it does not maintain the uniqueness and serenity of the original lot, at least the way the family feels. When we proposed a cul-de-sac in our original proposal, and since we've been going through this process, have learned some things from the Planning Commission and some ideas that came up from the neighborhood in general, so we modified it slightly, and most of the modification exists around the road. What we learned is we were building our road based on what the codes of the city of Edina were, and it was a 50-foot right-of-way with a 27-foot road in it. We decided, or we've learned that that's maybe not necessary, and what we're proposing, what in our modification is, is it's a 40-foot right-of-way with a 24-foot paved surface in it. And what we would do is maintain this western right-of-way border and pull the road away from this new house that was built at 4408 Morningside Road to give them a little bit more of a buffer on this roadway that's now going next to their house. Some of the other ideas that we had with this is that we would -- we're worried about, well, not worried about, but we're trying to be focused on the water and the runoff. We've got some good plans-- We've got some good plans on how to handle that, but since we were looking at what to do about the roadway, we're trying to think about adding some kind of a permeable center to it. Pavers or grass pavers, something that can absorb some of the runoff water. And one other thing we've agreed to do is move the driveway on this forty-four oh eight house from the Morningside Road access to the cul-de-sac access. We thought that was safer. Some of the advantages of this plan is that there's no fifty-foot lots in it. We hear from all the neighbors that we talked to and we hear the Planning Commission and even some of the council members talk about the issues surrounding building on fifty-foot lots in Edina. And hearing that, we assume that fifty-foot lots, that you'd rather not have fifty-foot lots, that the city seems to do a pretty good job of building on the seventy-five-foot lot, foot pad, and that we would rather present larger lots with more space in them, more tree savings than the fifty-foot. So that's where the fifty-foot lot, or the no fifty-foot lots came from. There's eighty-eight feet from this new house, the forty-four oh eight house, the edge of this house, to where the proposed houses would probably be spotted. So there's a lot of open area next to this house. We think that's a nice advantage. There's a lot lower housing density with only the six houses being on top of the hill and the two down below. It only requires three minor variances that the staff report has recommended. There's the greatest tree savings that we have in any of the three plans is with this cul-de-sac plan. Less traffic because we just have a cul-de-sac here instead of a Through Street. And we believe it maintains the peace and serenity of the original lot as best we can. So the Planning Commission asked us to take a look at what if we did some smaller lots that are more, that are consistent with some of the other lots in the neighborhood? And actually add in some fifty or slightly over fifty-foot lots, what would that look like? So we came up with two sketches that I'm presenting tonight and that I'd like to get your input on. Sketch Plan A creates two additional lots. So on top of the hill here now, off the cul-de-sac, there's eight lots with two down below still accessing off Latel. These lots are smaller than the seventy-five-foot minimum lot width for the most part. I think there's a couple back here that still meet the minimum width and down here on Latel as well. The road is the same road as we were proposing before. We have a forty-foot right-of-way with a twenty-four-foot hard-surface road on it. We've actually added a lot next to the forty-four oh eight house, so answering their request to move the road as far away as we can. We've decided that we were gonna, that after walking the Morningside Road, driving along Morningside Road, noticing that most of the houses on Morningside Road load off Morningside Road, their driveways load off Morningside Road, we've decided to focus all these, the three houses in the front, these front lots, to actually load off Morningside Road to be consistent with the houses across the street and down the street. The tree savings is not quite as good. You might gain a couple here in Lot One, but you're gonna lose some over here in Lot Two and Three. And we're still trying to go with some kind of permeable center in the road. I have some more comments on the road at the end of my presentation. The issues that we've come up with is, once again, we've heard the neighborhood uproar about the houses being built on fifty-foot lots in the area of Morningside. We, as a family, feel that it's not fair to ask us to be held to different standards than any of the other standards that are being enforced in this area. So we will not sign up to different building regulations than what the city has in place at the time the building's being done. This is higher density. There's two more lots. There's an estimated net tree loss of fourteen out of this plan. There's two more park usage fees that, park usage fees are the ten thousand dollars per lot that we would have to pay for any new lots that are established. We're not sure that we should pay those since we're only originally proposing eight and the city is asking us to come up with more. The big thing that we're worried about is that there's twenty-six variances needed for this plan. And we hear the outcry about variances in the meetings that we, and we're not sure that this is the way that the city, or that the people in Village of Morningside want us to go. Sketch Plan B, basically the same as Sketch Plan A, except the road is back in its original position, on the eastern side of the lots. And the three, the three small lots are moved into the front, all loading off Morningside So basically the same issues that we had in the sketch plan, or features we had in Sketch Plan B. You get the smaller lots that are more consistent with the upper part of Morningside Road. They all load off Morningside Road, similar to the houses across the street. They have the permeable center. The issues that we have, basically the same. Only difference in this one is that we think we'll probably lose one more tree. So that's the two sketch plans. A couple of other comments I'd like to make. There was some comments about having a sidewalk from the cul-de-sac, the end of the cul-de-sac, down to a city lot that's in the corner. Let me show you. So basically, it's a sidewalk from here down to this lot here, which is a city lot. And the family's not in favor of this for several reasons. First of all, the lot is an open-space lot. It's not a park. Second of all, the hill is too steep for a safe walkway when, if we don't put a Through Street through there, there's not, the actual grading of the hill doesn't allow to put a walkway in there without having steps. And we calculate there'd probably be sixty-five steps needed with a railing. We don't think that that's safe. We're not sure who would maintain it, especially in the wintertime. We also know that a sidewalk exists two hundred feet to the east on Lynn Avenue that connects that city lot with Morningside Road and the houses on the top of the hill. Finally, this is private property and there's really no precedent in Morningside for a sidewalk through private property. A couple of comments on the roadway. Our roadway has always been a design that's been basically trying to go with what the city is recommending us to build. We would like to put probably the narrowest roadway we can in there without creating any issues. And we've had conversations with the Planning Commission about putting in even as small as an eighteen-foot wide surface with a connected sidewalk or a rollover curb sidewalk to allow emergency vehicles to run one wheel on the sidewalk. I've had meetings with the Edina Fire. They don't really like this concept very much because they're worried about access for their emergency vehicles, especially in the wintertime, where they believe if we have big snow, it won't be easy for them to get in there. They were okay with the grass pavers or permeable pavers, but didn't like anything like a pond or a tree, et cetera, because that, they needed to be able to run over that center in order to, in order to turn their vehicles around. We're not sure how an eighteen-foot wide street really fits with the concept of the neighborhood. All of the neighboring streets are forty-foot wide right-of-ways with twenty-four-foot streets in them, I believe, except for Morningside Road, which is a wider street. So basically, what I'll tell the council is that we will build kind of whatever road the city would like us to put in there. So at this point, I'd like to get your comments on the three sketches that I presented. I'd like to come away with this, from this meeting, with some clear direction on which way we should go.
Sure. Thanks. A good presentation. Member Bennett.
Mr. Seidel, I have just a couple of questions and then I'll defer to my colleagues and offer my comments at the end. A couple of clarifications. So with option Plan, Sketch Plan A and Sketch Plan B.
Right.
The variances that would be needed are just for lot size. Is that correct? That would not be what might be required or sought by a builder, either the family building or someone else building on that site for a house?
I have to defer to my...
Sure.
Madam Councilmember, Peter Canably with Terra Engineering. They would be lot-size requirements, lot area, lot width, lot depth. We're also proposing on that narrower street, a variance on the front setback to twenty-five feet, just to bring those houses closer to the front. So that would be the only one. Side setbacks would be the same.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. Seidel, my second question, and then again, I'll defer to my colleagues. And that is, with reference to the city lot at Latel and Lynn, you said it's open space, not a park. It's my understanding that it's actually classified in the comprehensive plan as open space and parkland. Did you mean to say it's not a programmed park in that it doesn't have fields, playground, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Member Swenson.
When I looked at that property from your house, you're kind of at the bottom of a hill where you live now. And my question to you, based on lot, let's look at the plan right now. It's currently number nine. That's not built. You're number ten. But you show something that looks like a pond behind, or could you explain what you've designed that? Because to me, you've moved some earth to fill in nine and you've created more of a pond back there. Is that correct?
Yeah. We're looking at not a pond, but some kind of a water garden feature. Since we live there, Carol and I, we really don't think that a pond is the best alternative, but we know that there's going to be water to deal with. We have had some conversations with the Minnehawha Creek Watershed. And basically, what that would be, would be some form of a, let's call it a water garden with maybe even some lift station or emergency pump-out capabilities if the water gets too full down there. We don't believe that's going to be an issue. We've done the research on how the, on the maximum water depth of the kind of record situations we've had and it's never been a problem down there.
But would Lot Nine need fill brought in to be able to be built on it?
Correct.
Because it's only high right at the street and then it drops off?
It would need fill, yes.
Okay.
Member Brendel.
Thank you. I have several things. I will start out, looking at the modified original proposal in comparison with the other two. Sketch Plan A and Sketch Plan B both include the park usage fee, but the modified original doesn't?
Yeah, we've agreed to pay the additional park usage fees for the modified original. That's not an issue.
Great. Okay. And then, the conservation easement, I see in Sketch Plan A and B, but I also don't see that in the modified original?
It's there.
It is there?
Yeah.
Good? Excellent. All right. Then just some notes that I went down here. Okay. Okay, so part of this, whichever, well, pulling out Sketch Plan A, I don't want to talk about that one. Modified original, which is my favorite, I'll just go out there and say that. And then Sketch Plan B is my second choice. They both, one of the things that they both point out is that the driveway at forty-four oh eight would be redirected to come off of the new roadway. And therefore, the repair, the area along Morningside Road would be repaired to have the contiguous curb and gutter and sidewalk. And then lawn, or whatever you or they decide to do there.
Correct.
All right. And the roadway basically shifted eighteen feet to the west. Is that about right?
That's about right.
Okay. And then, by doing that, it created an outlot along the property of forty-four oh eight. So it's basically eighteen feet. And what's the depth of that outlot along forty-four oh eight?
I believe their lot is a hundred and fifty feet deep.
Okay. Great. All right. And then, on the modified original and Sketch Plan B, it looks like there are some trees that are gonna be planted in that outlot?
Right. That's to be determined, but we've agreed to do some kind of a landscaping plan for them.
Great. All right. And then, let's see, and then the single park dedication fee. All right. Those are my questions. And thank you for all your care and all your listening to the neighbors in this. I think what's gonna end up being the culmination of this, after we go through all this, is gonna be something that everybody will feel that they've been heard and understood, and that's a credit to you.
Thank you.
Mary, could you repeat the order that you liked the plans in so that I could hear it again?
Modified original is my favorite.
Okay.
Sketch Plan B is my second favorite.
Okay.
And I do not want Sketch Plan A.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Sprague, any inquiry?
I concur. My preferred plan would be modified original for a number of reasons. And I guess the orientation of the homes brings in some subjective analysis because if you favor a unified streetscape on Morningside, you'd like modified A or B. However, that orphans those properties from the internal experience of the cul-de-sac. If you prefer a unified cul-de-sac and aren't as concerned about the streetscape on Morningside, then you're gonna like modified, or the modified original. And that's where I fall in. It seems to me we're creating a more holistic experience for all of those neighbors. You already have a cul-de-sac environment simply by the roadway. I like the twenty-four-foot length and I like shifting it over and re-assimilating that existing new construction home that is now sitting on a kind of an odd side lot in orientation by itself and pulling it into this internal development. I think that builds a greater sense of community and obviously allows them some less busy access. By putting all the traffic within the cul-de-sac, you create less pressure on the intersections of Oakdale and Morningside Road in terms of where the traffic begins. I love the additional tree canopy. It seems to preserve most of the original estate. And that has some benefits for not just the lot, but for the neighborhood. I like the stormwater management technique at the bottom, the rain garden. That's thoughtful, as is the pervious pavers up top. And I like that the stormwater has been, the management plan has been, has gone into the design of the entire parcel. Is that something that's important to us as we are moving forward as a city council, not just for living streets, but in general, stormwater management, storm infiltration, water quality and so on? The, I think the lots are more comfortable. You have less density in your modified original than in the other two plans. And to me, it goes to impact to the neighborhood. The more, the more density you bring in, the more impact. And if we're trying to create an experience that will create the least impact to the neighborhood, it would seem that less lots and more buffered lots would meet that criterion. So in terms of the other plans, Sketch Plan, is it A? That keeps the road away from the existing neighbor to the left, the new construction, the blue house, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So as a backup plan, that would be my second favorite. But I'm, like I said, it depends on how you envision this experience for the user, for the families that are gonna live there, or the people. And I, I don't see creating, I see it as creating additional orphaned properties to the front. And in exchange for that, you have, you kind of unify that block of Morningside. To me, that's not a good trade-off for the users, for the families that may live there. I would rather see them oriented to the cul-de-sac experience. That's what a cul-de-sac is about. And will create a greater sense of community rather than... And will create a greater sense of community, rather than dividing off this very small community into two separate distinct entities.
Thank you. I thought you had a very good experience with the planning commission. And in reading the minutes of that meeting, you got some very good feedback there. I heard today from, we used to call it to two Michaels, now we got three Michaels on the planning commission. And all three of them always provide very valuable input. For me, over the years, when I've driven by your mom and dad's property or walked it with you, to see it, it's a really special place. And so when you talk about the character of the neighborhood, and people are concerned about the character of the neighborhood, for the past 50-plus years, the character of that corner of Morningside has really been a three-plus acre lot with a house stuck in the corner. And no offense to you and Carol, but your house doesn't even seem like it's on the same property.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
It seems like it's on Lower Oakdale, to me, instead of being part of this magnificent piece of property. So when I think about the park-like qualities of that property that have existed there for 50 years, what is it for me that creates the character of the neighborhood? Is something that can try to capture that parkland type effect that exists there right now. And for me, the only plan that does that is modified original proposal. I think that with that plan, you get, you get to retain a lot of the charm and the character of the property. So when you say you got confused walking around neighborhood, around the Morningside, and trying to figure out what it was you copy, you're right, it's not architecture, but it's, in the case of this property that your parents have owned for 50-plus years, it's visceral. So you've got to think about the character of the neighborhood in a visceral sort of way, at least for me. That's what happened. And so when I think about it, what creates that sense of place, that sense of spirituality, if you will, of that big piece of property with all those grand trees on it? Modified original proposal is the one that does it for me, because you're getting big lots, you're saving all these trees. And it's, you're getting that rain garden feature, or whatever it is you're going to put in down towards the bottom. For me, I don't think a sidewalk's needed from that property to that city open space, park, whatever you want to call it. The 18-foot wide street for me is out of character. And I think those are the key things that I wanted to cover. I don't like the conforming concept at all. I think that violates the character of the neighborhood, especially for Lower Oakdale. And the totally conforming plan, to me, is, with punching the street through to Lower Oakdale, is completely unacceptable for a multitude of reasons. So that one, I do not like at all.
Okay.
Can I ask Carrie or Wayne a question? We got some letters talking about this piece of property and when the road gets put in, and pulling out on the Morningside, and it's kind of, there's a little bit of a, well, there's a fair amount of a hill going down from east down west. Is there a spot that that street should come out that makes it the safest for pulling out?
I could take that one, Carrie.
Thanks, Wayne.
Members of council, we looked at the profile of Morningside Road. And Morningside Road actually comes up to a hill, starts at a hill just down by Ottawa Avenue, and then comes past Oakdale. And then the first crest is just right off of the first lot on the west side. So, and then it flattens out a little bit, and then it starts dropping back down. So to answer your question, the location that they're showing in the modified is really a good location for a roadway. If you were to move it to the west, you'd be on the slope of that hill, and it'd be difficult for cars coming and going out of that cul-de-sac.
So if we moved it to the west, that would be the modified A Sketch Plan that shows the house next to the Hardy House?
That's correct. The further that you move it to the west, the worse it gets.
Okay.
For access.
I forgot one other point I was going to make, and that was pulling the roadway away from the new house to the east. I thought was a very prudent thing to do. I thought it was good for a lot of reasons. And then leaving that good open area on the backside of those St. Louis Park properties, I thought was a good thing too, with modified original.
A question that follows up on Member Swenson's question, that is, Director Hul, can you, or Mr. Seidel, can you show us on the map where the existing driveway to the property is? I'm not favoring a road or cul-de-sac on the west, but I have some comments that I'd like to make. So where, again, is the existing driveway connection with Morningside Road?
It's a circular driveway. There's one entrance here, right along the border. Runs down and loops up and probably enters back right about here.
Okay.
So we have two entrances on that existing property.
Okay, my experience as a pedestrian is more with the one on the west than the one on the east.
Okay.
And, Member Swenson, may I?
Sure, and then I'll.
Okay. I, too, favor the modified original proposal. I resonate, as a resident of Morningside since 1987, I resonate with most of what Mr. Seidel has said. And I think it is about the neighborhood, it's about the community, not about the style of architecture. There is no single style, not the size of the lots, there is no single size of lot at all, all over the map, both in terms of lot sizes and in terms of house sizes. I think there was a question and answer given at the planning commission that emphasized the sizes of the homes that could be built on the 75-foot lots. But Director Teague, if you have time to push a pencil and come up with the square footage that could be built on the 50-foot lots, that might be helpful information to put on the, into the record, because I understand it's also fairly significant. On a lot like these would be proposed to be 50-foot wide, but also with the greater depth that's characteristic of this block or of this proposal. So I think not only is there square footage possible on the larger lots, also square footage possible in the smaller lots, but without that pleasant space between houses that is, that I think people in the neighborhood are preferring. And that would be, as the mayor has said, more, it would refer more to what is there today in the additional trees. So preferring modified original one, not preferring the smaller lots, preferring the larger lots. I have some concern about roadway, and I understand the comments and the preference for the cul-de-sac. What I liked about the idea of a road was the grid, the connection, the fact that so much of the neighborhood is on foot. I know they can be on foot just a little farther over. They're on foot on both sides of Morningside Road. And as a former transportation commissioner, I know that one of the things that slows traffic down is presence on the street. And when we take the one driveway that currently is on that block, I guess Mr. Berman will continue to have his driveway on the corner of Lynn and Morningside Road. But if the Hardy driveway is also moved inward, we now have a stretch where from the back of Mr. Berman's property, down the hill to Ottawa, there's no, nothing that motorists need to be concerned about, the one entrance. And I think it makes it very unsafe for pedestrians. It's a hill, it's a hill I'm very familiar with. There is no sidewalk from the edge of your parents' property and the edge of the, across the street down the hill. It's a pretty treacherous hills that exist today.
I would agree.
And I would be looking for something that is going to slow traffic down, not possibly encourage it to speed up. I also have seen correspondence from people, including one of the Michaels on the planning commission, who is also a resident of Morningside, really urging the turning, if, and I believe the dimensions are there, for the two southernmost lots, the ones just north of Morningside Road. The dimensions are, it's got the width, I believe it adds to over 160 feet. It's got a depth of 150 feet, I believe. So it would not quite be area median in terms of depth, but it would be legal depth, and it would be legal width, legal minimum width. And then you would have a streetscape with at least the Hardy House, wherever their driveway fit into cul-de-sac or Morningside Road. You would have those three houses making the streetscape, along with the houses across the street. To Member Sprague's point, I understand that there's this question of whether the culture, the mini, the microneighborhood, is the cul-de-sac, or whether there is an encouragement of sense of community between the new residents on the north side of Morningside and the existing residents on the south side of Morningside. I believe that a streetscape with homes facing it on both sides will do more to further that ladder, that sense of community, not just within the microneighborhood of the cul-de-sac, but actually going across. And back to the point I raised about the street versus cul-de-sac, I think connectivity, the grid, was part of people's concern, but it was also that sense of community. Was it going to be kind of a microneighborhood unto itself? Or was it going to be something that would possibly have a block dinner, but also would interact across the street? And I, after looking at it, looking at the dimensions, again with my familiarity, almost daily as a pedestrian, as well as a motorist in the area, I do think that that engagement with the street, with what exists for dimensions, would give more of that sense of community. It would give more of a sense of safety for pedestrians. We can still require a sidewalk to be built past the side of a house, but you don't have that same greeting. And people don't always maintain a side sidewalk, the way they do one in front of their homes. So again, for the safety for pedestrians, the safety of people crossing the street, there is no stop sign. There's a stop sign over on Wooddale to the west. There's a stop sign up at Grimes to the east. And otherwise, there's no stop sign along Morningside Road, along this entire stretch. And I would sure hate to create a streetscape that really encouraged traffic to pick up steam as they were coming up that hill, and possibly make it less safe for pedestrians than it is today. So those are my comments. I think you've done, you've done great work. You really have reached out to the neighborhood. I think you and your family have been really, really thoughtful about this. I do appreciate what it is that you're trying to preserve, as well as create anew. And I hope you can consider my comments in the spirit in which they're tendered.
Thank you, may I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
What I think you're saying is to take these two lots right here and switch them so that they load off of Morningside Road?
So that.
Is that correct?
So that they turn them.
Turn them and face them off.
So they again have the width, and they have the depth, but they would face Morningside Road instead. And I think that would make what you are creating engage the neighborhood, rather than being created as a cul-de-sac community. Again, to Member Sprague's point, the idea about cul-de-sacs, that they're microneighborhoods, there, we have a couple of dead-end streets or not really cul-de-sacs in Morningside. One connects with Coateen Park, and one would have connected with 44th Street on Oakdale, south of what you're showing. But we don't have a lot. And I think it's more of a suburban, farther-out suburban kind of invention. We have them in Edina, but not much in the northeast. And when they tend to exist with that cul-de-sac culture that Member Sprague mentions, I think it's when there are higher-order streets separating them. So you really aren't crossing the street from the cul-de-sac. The kids aren't crossing the street to play with the kids across the street. They're playing with each other on that cul-de-sac. And what I'm encouraging you to look at is something that, again, is going to bring your development, honoring your father, into connection with the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Can I ask, before I give you my comments, a question for your engineer?
Sure.
Pete? Mr. Knebel.
Yes.
You made a comment on one of the other plans, not the modified original, that you, one of the variances was you were, were lot sizes, but also something about building setback?
Not on the modified original, on Sketch Plan A and B.
Right.
On both of those, because we requested more lots, we had looked at the option, because of the increased density, to bring those lots further towards, or bring those homes further towards the street. And we'd do that by, instead of the typical, I think it's a 30-foot front setback, moving that 25-foot front setback, just five feet, reduce the amount of impervious and.
And was that only on the ones that fronted Morningside?
No, that, we were.
Or was that on all of them?
Our intent was for all of them, but obviously it's a sketch plan, so we could.
Exactly, I understand that. But you don't show that in the modified original, correct?
We don't think we need it for the.
That's fine, I just wanted to confirm that.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Actually, Member Bennett and I are pretty equal in what we feel. I, I'll actually support anything. I like, but I, what I prefer is that concept of engaging Morningside that Member Bennett does. So if it's with two 75-foot lots facing Morningside at the end, that would be great. I kind of like the, I prefer the idea that this has some look on the outside to the rest of the neighborhood. It may not have 50-foot lots, I'd probably be fine with those two, to be honest. But whatever the rest of my council member wants in lot sizes, that's fine. But I would prefer that this not be a cul-de-sac to itself, that it, the entrance to it, the two lots face the neighborhood. But you've done a great job, and, you know, whatever the majority here feels is appropriate, I'll support anything.
Okay.
Thank you for the time you've taken, any interest?
Thanks, thank you very much.
Member Brendel? Any other comment?
I think I've said everything I need to say.
Okay, very good. Member Bennett, follow-up?
Yes, Director Teague, do we have an answer on that question, on the home size on the smaller lot?
Yeah, these are, it's very rough, just quickly running those numbers. Some of those 50-foot wide lots would fall below 9,000 square feet. So the building coverage would increase to 30%. So just generally, on those smaller lots, it looks like you could get about a 5 to 5,500 square foot home on those lots. And the larger, the larger lots where 25% would be the maximum building coverage, you could get about a 6 to 6,500 square foot home. So they, you're right, they would be substantial in size, both ways.
Thank you very much. Could be.
Good, yeah.
Mayor?
Member Sprague?
Just one further comment, because we're trying to create a sense of community with a built environment. Turning those two lots, you kind of turn away from the internal house that you've tried to assimilate into the project very nicely. And you're just pushing a cul-de-sac back. So you're kind of hiding a cul-de-sac behind these two houses that are now, and have now turned away from this other lot you're trying to assimilate. So if community engagement is the focus, your best bet here for communicating community is to face people towards each other, and hopefully they can step down the street and be part of an incredible neighborhood association. I think you'll be able to engage them separately.
Member Brendel, the reason I was inquiring whether you had any further comment was we have, Member Bennett and Member Swenson would like to see those two lots turned to face Morningside and.
Yes, and I just picked up that I do have an opinion. One of the concerns I've heard by neighbors on the south side of Morningside, which is across the street, is the headlights that they're going to see facing their homes. So I think turning the homes toward the new roadway will, most of the coming and going onto the roadway will happen toward the new roadway, rather than toward the homes on the south side of Morningside. There undoubtedly will be lights coming out of the new road, but it wouldn't be spread along the road. So it would be more concentrated, I guess, which might be tough for 4411 and 4408 on the other side of Morningside Road. But, but at least it wouldn't, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have headlights in front of each of those four houses. I think that's my main comment. And that's brought from questions from some of the neighbors on Morningside.
Member Bennett?
Member Fradell, I don't know if, well, and Member Sprague, to your question. It's my, well, I know, that the house to the east of the proposed cul-de-sac actually faces Morningside Road. It has a garage that loads to Morningside Road at this point, and that garage could be relocated to the cul-de-sac. But the front of the house will not be relocated to the cul-de-sac, as far as I'm.
Right, but they are gonna, the driveway's going to be moved with the modified original proposal.
Right, but the front of the house with a porch will still face Morningside Road.
Right.
I guess we confused you on that one issue. For me, I get back to the feeling.
For me, I get back to the feeling of it. And for me personally, the, the way you retain, the feeling that's existed there for over fifty years is modified original proposal, the way you've got it drawn, not turning two of the lots to face Morningside Road. I see the, I see, I see the argument very clearly. I think it's a good one, the notion of engaging the street. But for me, the character of the neighborhood is what's been there for fifty years, and how can you best try to retain that? For me, it's modified original proposal.
Okay.
Now, I wouldn't like to see the guy, whoever buys that house on Morningside Road, put a big, long fence.
Control.
But they could, they could certainly do that. But nonetheless, I think this best captures the feeling of that property, for me.
Yeah. I'm not sure that I made myself completely clear as I was talking around, but I would not change the direction of the driveways.
Okay. Did you get one?
I hope that's helpful.
I think I did, yeah. We'll, we'll be back at it here in a month or two, and we'll see how we did. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience in going through the process.
Thank you very much.
The next matter before us this evening is Resolution two thousand thirteen dash seventeen, calling for a public hearing on a project by Calvin Christian School of Minneapolis. And Director Wallen, you have this matter.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight before you is a resolution for calling for a public hearing. Calvin Christian School in two thousand and eight did a project requested with the city council to do tax-exempt bonding at the time. That proposal was turned down. So they, they went out there and got taxable debt. Now they're in front of you to try to convert that taxable debt into, again, tax-exempt conduit, bank-qualified debt. Since the city could do, could do ten million dollars this year, their option for bank-qualified was to use another city, in this case, Lilydale. Even though, even though the, the proponent would, would utilize another city, it still needs to go through a public hearing at the city of Edina. And that's what's...
And that's because the property is located here?
The property is located here, yes.
Okay.
The property that was improved with the debt that they're asking to refi.
The improvement happened in two thousand and eight.
So the notion here is that we would pass a resolution calling for a public hearing, we would have a subsequent public hearing on behalf of the city of Lilydale to basically issue the debt?
That's correct.
And the city would have no financial responsibility with issuance of the debt being proposed. So what happens if we, if we agree to pass this resolution to have the hearing, and we don't approve, what do we have to do at the hearing? What's, what's, what's the action at the, at the hearing that we have to...
I believe the action, and I could defer to, to the city attorney, I believe the action is just to allow Lilydale to issue the debt. Again, there's, there would be no, it doesn't, it doesn't involve the city in any further responsibility, financial responsibility, other than, other than to allow the city of Lilydale to, to issue the debt.
All right. Manager Neil, and then Attorney Knutson.
The purpose of the, of public hearing is to provide people who, of the community where the improvement takes place, a chance to address the council. So you would collect their feedback, you, you would incorporate that into public hearing comments, like you would any other kind of public hearing, and you would forward those to the city of Lilydale.
All right. And Roger, any other comment, other than, number Bennett, you had a question or a comment?
Clarification, and that is that the letter that's attached to this states that it would require adoption of a resolution by the city, the city council expressing the council's consent. And a sample resolution was provided by a resident earlier today that, in another city, involved a joint powers agreement. So it's more than the public hearing.
Yeah. So I remember reading that in the letter too, and that was the purpose of my question, was what action is going to be required here?
I guess, I haven't, so, you know, I have not reviewed this. Bond council did. But my understanding is basically that. I mean, you're not going to issue the debt. Lilydale will issue the debt, but you'd consent to them, basically.
All right. I see, is this council for somebody, the school, or the city of...
Mayor Lilydale, or...
Oh, well, none of the above. My name is Steve Fenland. I reside at two thousand forty-two Charleton Ridge in St. Paul. I've been engaged by Calvin Christian to assist the city and also negotiate the private placement of the tax-exempt note. Councilmember Bennett, it's not contemplated that the city of Edina would be required to enter into a joint powers agreement. I apologize. You're right, it's, it's common in cases where you have multi-jurisdictional-type tax-exempt notes, where there is a joint powers relationship between the issuer and another jurisdiction where part of the project is located. We're not asking the city of Edina to do that in this case. Rather, we're using the city of Lilydale under the concept of nexus, and that concept under Minnesota state law says that, that citizens in the city of Lilydale have Calvin Christian School as an educational alternative for their community. And that establishes a relationship that, under Minnesota state law, allows Lilydale to issue the note. Federal law says, though, that any time another community is issuing a note on a property that's located in someone else's jurisdiction, there is a requirement that that city hold a public hearing.
Yes, but Mr. Fenland, your, it's your memo to Mr. Wallen here that states that, following the public hearing, it states, "A subject to a public hearing being held and the adoption of a resolution by the Edina City Council expressing the council's consent." So I understand your qualification of joint powers agreement, although that, I believe, wasn't materials that you provided to one of our residents. But your memo does state that it does require a resolution.
Yes. And subsequent to the date of that memo, I understood from bond council that joint, the joint powers role will not be required of the city of Edina.
I think we're maybe confusing joint powers with resolution. Are you now saying that your memo dated one twenty-three thirteen is incorrect?
Yes. No longer applies. At the time it was written, it was correct. But bond council informed me that it is not a requirement that the city of Edina enter to a joint powers agreement with the city of Lilydale, but rather passes a resolution that acknowledges...
There's still a resolution.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. So you concur, Mr. Fenland, with the opinion rendered by our city manager and our city attorney, that the action that we would be requested to take, should we hold a public hearing in this matter, would be to allow or consent to the city of Lilydale issuing this debt?
Yes, sir. And assuring Lilydale that a public hearing was, was performed here, and that we've met that tougher requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have a motion on this matter?
I have a question.
All right.
No, Mary, did you?
Yes.
Do you want, do you want to make the motion?
No. I have a question.
All right. Let's do some questions, and we'll do that first.
This mixes, I think, something in my mind, and that is taxpayer financing for a tax-exempt organization. And that concerns me a little bit. We've had some discussion in the community about the PACE program, and whether it would be, it would apply to non-tax-exempt organizations in our community. And I know that that is, that does not directly apply here, but it could set precedent to how we view taxpayer financing dollars, whether that comes from the city of Edina or any other city, for use by a tax-exempt organization. So my question is, is bigger than, it's broader than this issue, but wondering how we feel about it, does it apply? Does it set a precedent that we will have to deal with later?
We have, we have done this in the past, and I think, manager Newell, you weren't here, I think we've done it with Fairview Southdale. We've done it with some, oh, John, you would be the best one to comment on this.
We've, we've done conduit...
We've done this conduit financing before.
Yes, yes, sir. We've, we've done conduit debt for Fairview Southdale. At the last council meeting, there was a, a change in the, the financial manager of the, of another conduit debt, which was Vernon Terrace. We've done two Volunteers of America conduit debts for senior housing, and the elderly, or the high-rise adjacent to Edinburgh Park was conduit-ing, still is, existing conduit debt. So, so we have, we have done it a number of times in the past, most predominantly housing, senior housing.
Yep.
Mayor Sprague has a question.
Member Sprague.
So if we're putting the city in primatur onto this, this matter, is it necessary to find some public benefit?
I can answer that. Bond council does have to give an opinion that there's a public good. And in this case, it's an educational alternative that is not funded by the taxpayer. Just in case anybody listening from home caught, captured that word of taxpayer financing, let's, I want to be perfectly clear that when the city of Lilydale issues this note, it will not become an obligation for any taxpayer in Lilydale, or any taxpayer in Edina. This is a conduit financing. This is essentially a thirty thousand dollar per year benefit in reducing the cost of operating Calvin Christian School, which then allows it to make improvements to its curriculum, keep its tuition at a moderate level, and continue to sustain itself. But again, it doesn't come at any cost to a, to a citizen of the city of Edina, it doesn't come at any cost to the city of Edina, nor to the city of Lilydale or its taxpayers. It's purely a device Congress put in place to support the education provided by nonprofit schools.
I, I want to, that's not the answer I was looking for. I wanted to know if the city places in primatur on this, on this matter, do we have to show any benefit to our residents?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Manager Neil.
In reference to, maybe in reference to that question as well, councilmember Sprague, we've had this item reviewed by our bond council, and so it is permissible, it's legal for the council to do. However, it's also discretionary. You don't have to do it. It's, it really is up to the discretion of the council. It's, it, I believe, though, there is, there, the situation is that, that you cannot, Calvin Christian will not be able to do the refinancing unless there is a public hearing conducted by the city of Edina, even if we aren't issuing the financing. I believe that's correct, Mr. Fenland?
You're correct, yes.
But, but again, this is, this is a discretionary decision by the council, and you're under no obligation to hold a public hearing if you don't want to.
Member Swenson? And back to member Sprague.
I was here in two thousand and eight when we had the discussion, when we were asked to do this, and there was a lot of discussion at that time on which part of the school had, had religious education and which didn't, and therefore, which were we going, would we be covering. And at that time, I was not comfortable with doing this, because for me, it's still a separation of church and state. So I guess I haven't really changed from that feeling, whether I give permission for Lilydale to do it or not. It's still something within my purview to, to say yes or no to, and it's something that I still am not comfortable doing.
And if I may comment, I think we didn't do an adequate enough job explaining what that criteria is. And it is part of tax regulations that are imposed to every nonprofit in the United States. It's not that a religiously affiliated school can't use tax-exempt financing, but rather, it's a finer point of distinction, that there has to be an allocation. When you look at project cost, where were those dollars spent? And the amount that ends up being allocated to the tax-exempt note has to very clearly be tied to academic, or athletic, or administrative.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
So you're saying the criteria is not about religious, non-religious, it's about being tied to academic, or athletic, or one of those other factors?
It's, it's bond council undertaking a study of how the project dollars were spent, and writing an opinion that, that the amount financed with tax-exempt debt was not spent on any space where religious instruction or worship occurs.
Okay. Back to manager Neil. So if there's no, I've heard one, I may have partially answered my question, but if there's no recourse or effect whatsoever on the city undertaking its role, what, in your experience as a city manager, what, if any, have been reasons for denial in the past? I'm curious, it sounds as though there's no risk, nothing else, so why would they even push it forward? Is it purely purgatory? Or in your experience, have there been cities that have denied it, and if so, for what reason? In my experience, I haven't really seen too many of these denied. However, it's, it's your discretion to do so, and your basis may be, as, as councilmember Swenson discussed, you may have a philosophical concern about church-state issues. And when, when cities do these nonprofit conduit fundings, many times, they're not with a, a church or religious-based organization. It's a straight nonprofit, whether it's a housing organization, or, or in Northfield, we did them with the colleges to build dormitories on both campuses there. But in terms of finding a basis for, for a denial, it may be simply that philosophical position that an elected official might have, expressing concerns about these kind of relationships.
And if I could add, it's really not a role assigned to the issuer, or in this case, to the political subdivision having jurisdiction over the site. It's really a job that is assigned, a responsibility assigned to bond council to undertake that study and to give an opinion. And if that person is wrong, there will be a reckoning between the borrower, who now is paying a higher interest rate, and that bond firm, but, but not the city of Edina or the city of Lilydale. And nowhere in the process is either entity asked to take a position on this issue. I mean, I appreciate the concern, but it's, it's not something you're required to do, nor is it something you'll be affected by, even if it were turned out to be done wrong by bond council.
But it's also something you're not prevented from considering as well.
Thank you.
Member Bennett?
Yes, Mr. Fenland, appreciate your information, but it's our charge to make a decision that's for the benefit of our community, and I share my colleague's concern. I was on this body when we made this decision in two thousand and eight. I do think there's a church-state issue. In the instances in which we, as a community and as a body, have used conduit bonding, we have used it for what I think has been a clearly identifiable public purpose. I may have been on the body in my very earliest days, when we did some conduit bonding with Fairview Hospital, which serves the community and employs many in the community. I definitely remember the decision that we made to grant conduit bonding to the Volunteers of America. It brought ninety new jobs into this community. It relocated their headquarters from Golden Valley to our community, and we know that they also do work providing housing services on a non-sectarian, non-faith-based basis to people throughout the Twin Cities. The high-rises adjacent to Edinburgh Park, I know I wasn't on the council at that point, but that also was redevelopment in a part of town that needed that redevelopment. There was an affordable housing component to that development when it was first created, and also a public park. And whatever the financing was connected with it, it was something that had multiple clearly identifiable public purposes and benefit to the residents of this community. So the, I, I did not support it in two thousand and eight. I cannot support it now. And I, I think that my understanding of this school, with which I'm also very familiar, is its educational purpose is intrinsically untwined with its religious education of its students, which is a laudable purpose, but it's not a purpose that I feel should take even the time of this council, which would be done if it were advanced beyond this evening.
I would only suggest that this fifty-year citizen of the city of Edina... I would only suggest that this 50-year citizen of the city of Edina, that has provided an educational alternative for the community of Edina, that as that 50-year resident, you agree to hold a public hearing, take comment, and consider allowing the city of Lilydale to issue this note that will help this school continue to exist. I will also say that as an accredited school, it is required in its curriculum to deal with very specific academic things that are unrelated to any spiritual connection or religious affiliation the school has. I'm also prepared to read a long list of other religiously affiliated colleges, high schools, and grade schools that have recently used tax exempt financing in cities around the metro area and throughout the state. So we're not here asking you to do something exceptional, and we are prepared to bring in Bond Council to complete and satisfy your concerns about separation of church and state.
Member Brendel?
Thank you. This is not something we see every day. It's, it's a little out of, out of the ordinary. So I appreciate your being patient with us as we weigh the options. I actually don't see a downside. It, does this have, as, as Member Bennett puts it, does this have public purpose? I think it certainly has public purpose for people in Edina whose children go to Calvin Christian School. And, and they are an active member of our community. They do contribute to our community in a variety of ways. They participate in community events. They have gone as far as helping to fund some community events. So I, I don't see any, any reason to deny this. I don't think it'll hurt our community, and it will, it will in the end provide a benefit to the school and ultimately to the families involved in the school. And if, it, it seems to me we have two decisions involved here. One, whether or not to hold a public hearing. And then following the hearing, then we have a decision at that time as well, do we not?
After the public hearing.
Okay, so we have two decisions that simply are, are formalities, if you will, as part of this process. I don't think it hurts Edina to do this, and I think it's in the spirit of what we ought to do.
Member Sprague.
Thank you, Mayor. The legislation authorizing this was neutral, is neutral on its face. It's offered to all nonprofits, not just religious affiliated institutions, correct?
501(c)(3).
Okay, so that, and that would have been challenged if that were an issue. So I don't have any problem with that side of it. I, I also believe, however, that there should be a nexus to public purpose and public benefit for us lending our name to any transaction on behalf of our residents. Whether it's purgatory by legislation or not, I think that threshold is, is important. So I, because I believe that, I would like the community and the applicant a chance to have a public hearing, to have their, have the information vetted and brought forward on that particular topic. And then we'll go from there.
All right. I feel the same way. I voted against this in 2008, but I think, Mr. Fenlin, you pointed out appropriately so that the proponents at that time from Calvin Christian School did not adequately make those secular distinctions that were important to be made as to how the financing will be used. And, and I think that's one of the major reasons that, that it failed at that point in time. So I'd like to have the hearing for several reasons. I'd like to hear some direct testimony as to how the secular interest is going to be satisfied. As Member Sprague eloquently said, Congress has allowed this tax, tax-exempt debt to be used as a vehicle for a variety of nonprofits, 501(c)(3). But you've got to be able to, to show that, that connectivity, that nexus between the use of the funds and a, and a secular purpose. So you, you know, better be prepared to do that. So I think we're, what you're going to see is a 3-2 vote here to go ahead and hold the hearing. And then we'll, we'll listen to the testimony and then make a decision on whether or not we're going to, going to take the action requested, which would be to allow Lilydale to issue the debt. All right. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay. We've got a resolution 2013-17 calling for a public hearing on the project by Calvin Christian School. Further, we have a discussion?
You don't have a motion.
Do we have a motion?
No, not yet.
We need a motion.
Second.
We had a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 2013-17. No, no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay.
Nay.
Carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're jumping from the tax-exempt world into the world of Hello Pizza and liquor licenses. So, Clerk Mangan, do you have this matter? Member Bennett?
Your Honor, if I might, my son is an employee of Ann Kim and her other establishment, and so I will not be participating. I can leave the dais if that would be more appropriate.
I'd say having your son employ you, it's an indirect pecuniary interest.
It is, but I prefer, I, I will not be participating.
All right.
I can stay up here as far as I'm concerned.
All right. Clerk Mangan.
Thank you. Grey Ghost Grub LLC doing business as Hello Pizza. At 3904 Sunnyside Road, applied for a new on-sale wine and liquor, and 3-2 beer liquor licenses. The space has previously been occupied by the Franklin Street Bakery. Grey Ghost Grub LLC has filed all the necessary paperwork, paid the applicable fees. The administration department has reviewed the license and finds that they comply with all of our code and requirements. The health department is satisfied with the applicant's plan for storage and service. The planning department has reviewed the application, finds it complies with code. The police has completed their depart, their background check of the applicant, and Sergeant Olson's memo stating the findings was attached. And the licenses are before the council for consideration for approval. And I believe the proponents are sitting right here in the audience.
All right. Number Swenson.
Carrie, when this was brought up, I think in community comments, because someone had a concern about this establishment opening, and I think you stated at the time that they couldn't use servers, but they could sell pizza by the slice. So is this pizza by the slice and a glass of wine to go? I'm kind of confused.
There's no wine to go here.
I know that. Okay, that was a little sarcastic. I'll rephrase that.
What, do you think this is Louisiana?
Yeah.
Margaritas to go?
But I'm just a little confused as to the format and what we allow and don't allow. And so what serving of alcohol does with, so they can buy pizza by the slice and a glass of wine and eat it there? Is that what they are allowed to do? I'm not sure what...
Yeah, that, that's correct. It's a non-conforming use, in that there's not enough parking spaces allowed onsite. So they're, they're moving into the facility essentially under the same use as the bakery that was there previously, so that the number of seats within the restaurant would be, or within the, within the Hello Pizza would be the same as the bakery. So they're not expanding the use in any way.
Similarly underparked?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and what are the number of seats that they have in that?
I don't know them off the top of my head.
Okay.
They did come in and visit the planning department, and we compared the seating plans from what was there previously to what they're proposing. We'll review that as part of a building permit when they, when they come through.
Sure. Only because we are underparked in that area, and I certainly want them to be successful, but I don't want to create a point where that whole area becomes unsuccessful because of the parking situation for everyone else that's currently there. So, you know, where I understand pizza to go, and I can understand some issues on how to pick it up and take it with you, or standing at a high tabletop and eating a couple pieces, the, the wine and the beer license just sort of add a little bit more to the mix.
You made me think of a Yogi Berra-ism. Nobody goes there anymore. There's too many people.
Well, and you, but you want, you want your neighborhoods to be successful. So this just kind of brought that up as a point of issue.
Well, hopefully the liquor will hold them there longer, so they're not just coming and going so quickly.
Okay.
So you don't have as much traffic in and out. It's more resting and then...
Well, can, since the proponent is here, can we ask her how many seats there would be?
Sure. I was going to give her a chance to come forward anyway. So, Ms. Kim? And also, Edina resident?
Yes.
And why don't you tell, why don't you go to the side to be better? Yeah, introduce yourself, give us your address.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ann Kim, and I reside at 5416 Brookview Avenue in Edina. I'd be happy to answer your question about the seats. We actually will have 32 seats. Along the south wall window, there'll be approximately five to six high-top benches where people can come in. We understand it's heavy lunch traffic, so we thought at that time there'd be a lot of slice business. We also understand that Southwest High School has an open lunch policy. And I spoke to one of the workers at Bruegger's Bagels, and they said there's a lot of students that come in for lunch, so we expected a lot of student traffic, slices, sodas, ice cream, that, that nature of business. And then in the evening, we thought it would be families, more family-oriented, people picking up whole pies to go, or coming in for a quick bite to eat before a movie or something. And of course, if you're a parent, you might want to have a glass of wine or a beer while you sit. We are also going to have some tables that will be in the center of, of the dining space. And there will be roughly about 25 seats in that area. Our pizzas are available by the slice, but they're also available by whole pies. So if a family did decide to stay and dine and have a whole pie, they could do that and have a glass of wine or a beer as well.
Good. Member Brendel, other questions for Ms. Kim?
So it's more cafeteria style than service style?
Yes, it's counter-service. So if you think of punch pizza, so if you're familiar with Pizzeria Lola, it's full service. There are servers. But Hello Pizza will be more of a punch pizza, where you come up, you order, the ticket goes in, and then basically we'll have bussers and runners that will go and bring the slices to whoever ordered that, or a whole pie as well. So even though it's not full service, there will be someone running that to them. They won't be picking it up physically themselves and taking it to the table.
Are you going to do valet pizza?
Well, it, like you said, it's a blessing and the curse. We're pretty busy at Pizzeria Lola, and we had similar, the neighbors weren't upset about a beer and wine license, but they're very protective of the parking area. But in the end, I think they've been really happy about what we've brought to the community and the neighborhood, and they've been really excited that they can actually walk and have a meal during a snowstorm. And there's not much to choose from in, in terms of dining in that neighborhood. So I think we've become, you know, a real big asset to the community. And we hope to be that in the morning side neighborhood. We live in Edina, and we're really excited to be there.
Pizzeria Lola is an asset for Edina.
Yeah. Well, you know, the funny thing is, Pizzeria Lola is actually on the Minneapolis municipality.
Yep.
And across the street is Edina. And with Hello Pizza, we're actually on the Edina side, and across the street is Minneapolis. So, so...
All right, good.
And we love, we had no idea John was your son. We love John, so...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion with regard to this matter?
So moved, second.
We got a motion and a second. To approve a new on-sale wine and 3-2 beer license for Grey Ghost Grub LLC, DBA as Hello Pizza. It's going to be at 3904 Sunnyside Road, the old, what was that? Frank, it wasn't Franklin Bakery. Was it Franklin Street Baker? Site. So what's, when's the move-in date?
We hope to be open in March.
All right. I guess that's what one of your waitresses told me at Pizzeria Lola recently. All right. We got a motion and a second. No, no further discussion. I take it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And next matter is the neighborhood boundaries and names and the related neighborhood association policy that we're going to take up this evening. We had a public hearing on it a couple weeks ago, and some good folks in our town have done a lot of hard work on this, and we're going to have a discussion tonight about where to go next.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Last week, or a couple weeks ago, at the last council meeting, you heard an in-depth presentation from the Neighborhood Identification Steering Committee about the Name Your Neighborhood project. And I thought I would just provide a few highlights with regard to the neighborhood policy, the proposed neighborhood policy for neighborhood associations, which wasn't covered as in-depth at that session. And so just to refresh with regard to the purpose for potentially having neighborhood associations or a formal recognition program here at the city of Edina, and really the primary purpose was to facilitate communication between the residents, city staff, and officials, and then to foster interaction between individuals on issues of common geographic concern, and then to build a better community through cooperative action. We envisioned that the city would interact with neighborhood associations on matters such as street reconstruction projects, redevelopment sketch plan reviews like we did tonight, land use planning, and park development or redevelopment. In terms of the policy development, this policy was actually drafted by staff, not the Neighborhood Identification Steering Committee itself, although we received their input at a meeting on October 22. We reviewed the policy with the council at a work session on December 4. We posted the policy on our website and solicited comments on Speak Up Edina, and then of course, had the public hearing at the last council meeting. I would note that many of the key policy components have been discussed throughout the Name Your Neighborhood project. When you think about the concepts such as the purpose of the neighborhood associations, how the neighborhood associations would function within the city, and then the idea of inclusiveness versus exclusiveness. It's important to remember that for existing neighborhood associations, that they would have the option of becoming a recognized neighborhood association, or remaining as they are today. If they chose to become a recognized neighborhood association, they would have to match their boundaries under the proposed policy to match our neighborhood community map and meet the city's recognition standards. And under the proposed policy, those recognition standards primarily relate to bylaws, and those requirements would include things such as open membership, no discrimination based on a protected class, that there would be a requirement to hold one annual meeting. There would be the procedures for the election and removal of officers, and then a defined method for maintaining contact with members and the city. With regard to expectations under the proposed policy, the neighborhood associations would be included in the public input process, but they would not be presumed to speak on behalf of the neighbors. They would be strictly voluntary with no requirement to join. Neighborhood associations would not be assumed the, to take on the role of an administrative or legislative body, and that there would be only one recognized neighborhood association that would exist within a neighborhood, although other groups could certainly be present. The recognition process that's outlined in the proposed policy would include an optional educational meeting if residents wanted to learn more about the potential of a neighborhood association, that the city would notify neighbors via mail of the opportunity to vote on recognition and bylaws if organizing was being pursued. After an affirmative vote, the association would apply for recognition, and then the city manager would review the application and notify them of the decision. City support under the proposed policy would include a landing page on the city's website, some limited copy, copying services, an annual about-town listing so that residents were aware that the neighborhood association existed, the potential for guest speakers from the city, and then the option for meeting space within city buildings and facilities. The last component of the policy has to deal with neighborhood names and boundaries and potential changes in those areas. For name change, it's proposed that there would be a one-year window after recognition to change the name, and then there would be formal action by the association, and then that would be forwarded to the council for review and approval. There's also- There's also a separate section that deals with technical boundary issues. That would be where you potentially would like to shift, uh, maybe the line, the boundary line, from the middle of the road to the back lots. That also would require formal action by the association, notifying the adjoining, potentially impacted neighborhood, and then a review by the city council and approval. And then finally, more significant boundary changes, which could mean the removal of the boundary by several blocks. And for that, under the proposed policy, we would have a three-year waiting period. It would require formal action by the association, and the impacted neighborhoods and, uh, under the proposed boundary change would have to agree to the change as well. And after that quick review, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Karen? Number Sprague?
You sent us some material on sizes, and you looked at some other jurisdictions. Do you have that with you?
I do. It will take me a minute, probably.
And concurrent with that discussion, there's also a slide on a system where you map out boundaries versus you let the association's boundaries evolve organically and what the difference is in, um, in coverage and inclusiveness, and that's another one I'd like to see, please. But this one first, yeah?
This was some data that was actually gathered by our city manager intern, Ari Klugman. And she had looked at some other cities that had neighborhood programs, and then looked at their number of neighborhood associations, their population, and the estimated size of their neighborhood associations. I will say that this data is not perfect, because not all of these communities are one-hundred percent organized. And because they're not one-hundred percent organized, that's probably gonna skew the number a little higher than it might be in reality.
But in your professional opinion, as being late adopters to this, this neighborhood association method, would we be better to err on the larger side or the smaller side where we're at?
I think in terms of, um, you know, I think we have, as a committee, talked a lot about the size issue, and, and you heard some of the feedback that came from the NIS committee. And there are some concerns about viability with smaller neighborhoods. We did a webinar with an organization called Nextdoor, which fosters, it's a social networking platform for neighborhood associations, and we asked them that question, since they have a lot of experience with it. And certainly, while there can be small and large and very large neighborhoods that are viable, they felt that the sweet spot for neighborhood associations was somewhere between two-hundred-and-fifty households and two-thousand.
Okay. So this, this number that we arrived at was not without some thorough research and discussion?
There was considerable discussion.
Hunting for the best practice, okay. And then in terms of the other decision for us to set out to create defined boundaries versus letting associations evolve organically, can you show me the map, comparative map between two jurisdictions? It was shown at the third meeting.
So this was, this was the map that we showed at the third meeting.
Okay. Tell me a little bit about that.
Uh, compared Bloomington, Indiana, and a map that we pulled off of their website, where I think they took a more organic approach to the neighborhood associations, and you can see the colored areas represent the neighborhood associations, and there's areas that are obviously not covered as opposed to the more holistic approach that was adopted by St. Louis Park, where every segment of the city and every area the city belongs to, or has the potential to belong to, a neighborhood association.
And so again, some thought went into the best practice to adopt. And St. Louis Park's model, is, is that the majority of model out there in your professional opinion? From what you've researched?
You know, I, I don't, I have seen lots of, lots of examples of both. I would, I would hesitate to say that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Question for Karen? All right, Member Brendel?
I do. I am challenged by this proposal because of the, I look at a neighborhood group, a neighborhood, and the resulting group, should it become something as a grassroots effort that is built by the neighbors for their own benefit. And I don't see why government needs a role in forming that group, in keeping it informed. It's, it's why they form, is because they want to be informed. So together, they form this group, and then they take action as their own responsibility to become informed. And we have those avenues. We have those in place by the ability to sign up for City Extra, by the ability to go to the website and look at press releases and bulletins. And that neighborhood can make its determination of what is important to it. Whether it specifically applies to that neighborhood or not doesn't mean that neighborhood wouldn't be interested in it. So I'm, I guess I have a little trouble with the filtering aspects and the, the role of City Hall in determining what is going to be meant for that particular neighborhood. I think that's better decided by the neighborhood itself. That's, that's one of my things. Um, let's see. There, the, also, the, the term neighborhood association. So if I look at page one, under expectations, and Karen, I know that you and a committee of many, many people have done an enormous amount of work, and I don't want my comments to sound like I don't appreciate that. But I do want to be honest and open about my opinion.
Absolutely.
Under expectations, the last bullet is only one neighborhood association may exist in each neighborhood. Well, the fact is, there are neighborhoods that have more than one neighborhood association right now. So we are taking a term that, that exists and means something, and using it now to refer to a recognized neighborhood association. I understand by, by the rules of the game, that only one recognized neighborhood association can exist in each neighborhood. So I think the, the nomenclature is gonna be a challenge for people to understand what it is that they are, and if they need to change, what they need to change to, and if they don't want to change, how can they proceed if they want to be recognized? So I, I, that's unworkable for me, that, that, that a block on the map, including eight-hundred households, can only have one neighborhood association. Neighborhood associations in my mind are, they're close-knit, and they, if I've got eight-hundred homes, that's a big area, and some of those areas are eight-hundred homes. So if I've got that many homes, I expect to see more than one neighborhood association in there. And creating the need for an extra layer, if you will, to have, all right, if I'm gonna have five associations that are grassroots, they're the neighbors, they currently exist in that area, and if I want them to be recognized by the city and thereby receive communication through that recognition, that actually creates, for me, another level, which is recognized, then filters that information down to the existing associations. And I don't think that's necessary. I think the tools are there for each of those five associations, and this is just an example I'm pulling out of the air. But there's alway, already tools and facilities for those five existing grassroots neighbor, neighborly associations to get what they need to get, to be informed and to be involved. So that, that does concern me. Let's see. Back when this conversation started, because it started, in my mind, around two thousand and one or two thousand and two. That's when it hit the radar for me, anyway. The example that I looked at, and I was really impressed by, and it was highly awarded by some state grant, is in Falcon Heights, and they have something called neighborhood liaisons. It's very simple. It's one level, and they have a webpage called Resources for Residents. It's where everybody goes to download the information they're interested in reading about. And out of that came the InTouch program, out of that came City Extra for the city of Edina. And I think, in order to serve our public the best, I think we need to publicize what we have. I need to, I think we need to publicize it better than we do. To publicize it and say it's there is not enough, because the people might not be looking at it at that time. So we need to continually make available the, the fact that all of this information is out there. A landing page is a great idea, and it's for everybody to visit. It just, as I started working on this, I thought all the information ought to be available to everyone. And I don't see associations as being needed for that to happen. And, you know, the school district's new mission statement, I think, says it all, and it's all for all. I think we could adopt that same mission statement in a lot of ways for what we do in this community. And this is one way that I think we could make that, make that happen. Again, I appreciate all the work. We wouldn't have gone through all this thought and, um, and, uh, and to this degree without all this work. But it does illustrate that either we've got some tweaking to do, or we can step back from the canvas and just see that we might have it a little too, um, government for neighbors, for residents, to latch onto it. That's my big concern.
Member Swenson, I'm wondering if we should let Karen sit down?
Oh, well, sure.
And so as we're having these conversations, it's just, it's just as easy to...
Sit down and then...
It's just as easy to ask you a question as you're sitting as standing.
Yep. I was in the group of council members that went along with this because I had other council members that felt really strongly about creating this task force. And I kinda went dragging, I'll admit it, right, uh, from the start. However, what, the most interesting thing I discovered is that this group did an incredible job advertising. It got written up in the Sun, it got written up in the Tribune, it was in our Extra, it was in all these things. And we've done studies in how our neighbors and our residents get information, and they get it from a whole bunch of different areas. And then what we heard this last week is, well, I didn't know this was happening, and how can you rename my neighborhood? So I actually think what it proved to us is we don't have a good handle on communicating with our residents. And that, to me, has made me flip, knowing that we need to develop stronger connections with our resident, residents and their organizations, or what they could potentially build. But the other thing I also heard, and this reminds me of a few years ago when we had a group come in and they want a moratorium on teardowns, and they wanted us to decide, they kinda held the meeting hostage that night through community comment, and they wanted us to immediately do it that night. And we decided to wait two weeks and take some input before we did that. And I heard all over town, people that hadn't said a word before, just hammering me, don't do that. I'm about to sell my house, my mother's about to sell her house. Figure out a way to control building without shutting down all the rebuilds. And we didn't, and we made changes, and we're going back through that again. But what is interesting to me is, I think this is a similar case. We have heard people say, not necessarily, don't make neighborhood associations, just don't necessarily create them the way you're doing, let me name them, let me do some of the boundary work as a neighborhood. And so that's more what I'm gonna respond to tonight. I do think we need neighborhood associations, because I think we need that direct connection. I think we need to be able to send emails out that can be dispersed better. People, yes, the Extra's there, it may not have the information they want, or they may not sign up for it. We may need some people in a neighborhood to hand out flyers to people that don't have computers. So I do think we need a, a better connection. I think that what we've heard is that there is this fear that we're renaming their neighborhood, and that name will stick in the neighborhood name they've had for their smaller neighborhood will go away, which isn't our goal at all. Maybe our, our neighborhoods aren't going to be as big as what we originally thought was the most logical size, but I do support neighborhood associations. I support them having some sort of structure so that they know that they need to be inclusive and never exclusive. So I, I'm stronger in neighborhood associations than when you guys first started this, but I'm a little bit more towards the self-selection of name and the changes of boundaries.
Thank you. Member Swenson, member Brendel, excuse me. Thank you, Member Swenson.
After Member Sprague asked to see the slides, I have a follow-up question because he, um, Member Sprague, you asked Assistant Manager Kurt what her opinion was on sort of the intentional holistic mapping versus the unintentional, and I think that question can be asked and answered from two perspectives. And that's one of the important things I think we're dealing with here. There's the question of the independent group, the naturally occurring group, and there's nothing about what's being discussed that has to change those. Those groups will always exist, as Mr. Seidel talked about microneighborhood, the block parties, the book groups, the babysitting co-ops, the men's athletic clubs. I think what is, what's very different and very important to see as different is when that, those groups are asking for something that the city is not obligated, either by code or statute, to provide, a line of communication that's not tied to the area around a residential reconstruction project. We have code for that that tells us that letters go out to a certain area. But we've heard from people that that's not enough notice. The whole area wants to know. How do you define that area? And if you have a list of citywide, a hundred and sixty, or two-hundred, or two-hundred and fifty, book groups, babysitting co-ops, and groups that may call themselves an association but cover two blocks, you're putting a very huge and expensive burden on the city to do a job it can't possibly do, to try to keep communication open with groups that doesn't know how to identify, can't necessarily find, can't keep current contact information for. And I think, Member Swenson, to your point, this was a process that illustrated some of that, because I think it was very well-publicized in every avenue that the city has available to it. And I think where we saw consistent neighborhood notice and participation were the neighborhoods that are formally organized. Those neighborhoods took it upon themselves to send out regular emails to their groups. I don't know if you wanna call it filtering or what you wanna call it, but they knew that this was a process that was a civic process. They were providing that information to residents in those neighborhoods so that they could choose to participate or not. And we did see at the public meetings, residents of those neighborhoods participating. So, so there is, I think, first of all, purpose for this process and the result, and a need for it. And I think, again, Member Swenson, you've spoken to that, Member Sprague, you've spoken to that, and Member Brendel, you've even spoken to it. You talk about a landing page on the city's website. Well, to whom would you offer that? If you offer it to forty potential associations, I think that's a manageable number to ask staff to work with. If you open it to anybody, are you opening it to a hundred and sixty groups, two-hundred groups? I think you're talking about an expense, and that was something we saw in our emails. People talked about bureaucracy, and I think... People talked about bureaucracy, and I think they were talking about it in two ways. They were talking about another level of government, which is not what we're talking about here, and I think they were also talking about expense. And the way to have this function most efficiently and most effectively, both from a perspective of actually reaching people and also from a perspective of cost-effectiveness, is to have some system. So, does an existing group that calls itself a neighborhood association need to adopt bylaws, elect leadership, hold a face-to-face meeting? No. But if they want the city to provide it a landing page, if they want the city to be setting up an avenue of communication that the city isn't obligated by code or state statute to do, then I think the city, we, have a right and an obligation to set up a system that make, that allows us, allows the city to ensure that the notice that it's providing is going to reach all the people within a geographic area, or as many people as the communication plan can reach. I think that's really important. I think it's a public interest, as well as the cost-effectiveness and the efficiency. So I don't know, Member Swenson, where that fits with what you're seeing at this time, but I do see the need to, the need and the desirability of moving forward with a map that provides an inclusive structure that people can request changes to, that provides a framework. One last thing, I think, and we've seen this in the emails. The system that we have has worked well for some people, but it isn't a citywide system, and that's what's being proposed. Again, from this public perspective, as public servants, we are proposing something for neighborhoods that haven't had a name before, for neighborhoods that haven't had recognized boundaries before, so that they have the ability to communicate on issues that are important to them, back and forth with the city. I think it's a public good, and I think we should move forward.
Let me clear up one thing, that I wasn't suggesting that the men's bowling group and the babysitting co-op and everything be recognized as groups. I do believe there needs to be a minimum size. So I do agree we need to go forward with this. I would prefer that we work on a minimum size that fits, and I'm going to ask Karen, what is in the Sunny Slope area? Because that, we've already gotten a lot of conversation about, they want to be a minimum neighborhood unto themselves. So what are we talking for a number of households in Sunny Slope?
I think the parcel size is, I think it's 87 parcels.
And what about contiguity? The idea that if, now, in the case of Country Club and Sunny Slope, two neighborhoods that have long-recognized boundaries, that have some natural features, the creek, 50th Street, a major feature, and also have some organization that brought them to our meeting two weeks ago. In that case, they are contiguous. And Sunny Slope is bordered on the west by Highway 100, on the south by 50th Street, on the north and east by the creek. What are you, do you have a suggestion, or what would you be proposing for a neighborhood that is possibly smaller, that has had identity within a larger area, as this committee has recommended? But that creates a gap between one area and another area. Part of what the committee did, I think...
Orphans. No, I understand.
No orphan.
I have the same concern about orphaned neighborhoods. You know, and I tried to advocate for why Sunny Slope and Country Club had some interests jointly because of the creek and building on either sides of the creek, and we clean the creek, and we put a sound wall in, and now we're putting in, it might be nice to say we're working on the bridge and below, and this is what we're doing in a joint email to both, because that affects. But, you know, I saw the advantage of large groups and why you would want to give information to them, because what's happening involves both sides of the creek. But I just think we also have to hear our residents, and I don't think Sunny Slope is the only neighborhood that really wants to be within themselves. When the group was working, they did talk about other neighborhoods who spoke very eloquently. I think Dick Crockett was part of a group that talked about why their area should be considered in itself entirety. I think we're going to get more of those. So I think our plan should at least be flexible, because I think we hear our neighbors saying, "Yes, we're a group, and maybe we need to be organized and connected to you," but we see our group as this group. So how do you handle that and not have orphaned neighborhoods? I'm not sure, but I could see, I don't know, Karen, one more meeting of our group that could talk about areas that had issues and how those neighborhoods would be.
I think it's in our ballpark now.
Okay, that's fine. Karen gave me permission to ask that question earlier. So I was only asking what she gave me permission.
All right. All right. Let's let Josh go first, then first go around.
Thank you, Mayor. To me, this neighborhood association policy is part of a toolset of democratic governance. And it's a way of setting up more participatory and deliberative and collaborative governing, away from the old stagnant, you know, minimum legal requirements of trying to get people involved and going out to a more dynamic approach. We have been, this is an extension of a vision. We've been working on the last few years, in case you didn't realize it, by, here are some examples of ways we've been trying to engage the public in active ways. Town hall meetings. We've had task forces and community dialogues. We've had, we now have a walks with the mayor, which is talking. We've had due-town neighborhood walks with city council members. We've had, we now have institutionalized biennium budget workshops, which were facilitated by an outside entity that works on democratic governance and citizen engagement projects. Biennium surveys. The Grand View Project, and think about the extent of the citizen engagement and participation in that venue. And then, and that was part of the small-area-plan framework that continues to evolve. So we have been using different tools than in the past, and I think we all like the results and the participation, the feedback we're getting. What has been lacking from all this is a mechanism to holistically communicate and activate participation in all of these various ventures. And not only participation in numbers, but representative participation from different corners and different walks of life within the city, and people that are dynamically interested in the topics that are happening. The way that we can get more participation and more representative participation is through a neighborhood association system. It has to be a system, because we don't want to exclude people, and as is said on that one slide, we want everyone to know that they are part of a neighborhood. It does not curtail or prevent anyone from informally networking however they currently do. We know that community is built on many different levels. You have it with your neighbor. You have it on your block. Some blocks combine together into a little association that has social events once or twice a year, and so on and so on. And the high evolution of that is the neighborhood association system. Why we want the minimum, as you said, Member Brennan, last meeting, why we want minimum organizational efficiency is to ensure they are inclusive, and the only way to do that is to set out some very basic standards, similarly to what we've done with the athletic association system. We allow them certain staff resources and work in partnership with them, and in exchange, we require certain minimal nondiscrimination and inclusiveness standards to be upheld by the associations, and there's due process in there as well. So we have to, the only way we can ensure that organizational efficiency is through setting these minimum standards in place. The other thing I think we forget is, I always think about oldcomers and newcomers to Edina. The oldcomers in Edina think, hey, if it's not broke, don't fix it. We know what's going on. We talk amongst our neighbors and so on. But we're bringing new people into the city at record rates. What is our strategy for engaging them? We're doing all the old institutional things. There's a way to get them...
Welcome basket?
Yeah, welcome basket. But there's a way to get them engaged, and I look at the, at the school district and what they do, and kind of with envy, because I think they're very good at getting people to participate. Now, they have a natural alignment there with parents. But I think we have to also think forward and work on a more effective strategy. And again, this is where neighborhood associations come in, a way to touch these newcomers and get them involved in the business of the city. The other, the other area, so I was talking about representation. I think about recruiting for boards and commissions. We're always trying to find different representation. How nice would it be to be able to send out a uniform statement and make sure that it gets to the appropriate parties? And not only through electronic communication, which are the high-techies, but neighborhood associations also communicate in a low-tech way. They meet, they do flyers, you know, those are, and we know that everyone has a mailbox, and that's another way to reach a broader part of the demographic than just someone who signed up for City Extra. So there are so many benefits, and I don't, I don't see any, anything that is, that will work against the networks that are there in place already. If they would like to evolve further and just adopt the very minimum standards, I don't think we're placing a huge burden on them to do that. We're not asking for the moon here. They're very simple organizational requirements you'd find for anything where there's an exchange of resources. And I also think that the map was well-thought-out. It received much feedback. I would simply make a few tweaks to it based on the feedback that we have received, and I can tell you specifically, the Sunny Slope issue is, to me, not so much about Sunny Slope as it is about the well-branded, well-established boundaries of Country Club. It's more Country Club driving that map change for me than Sunny Slope, per se. However, Sunny Slope is a very deep-pocket neighborhood, you know, surrounded by highway and a busy road and the creek, so it kind of naturally lends itself to being separated off. So I would simply separate off Sunny Slope. There's no other place to attach it to that makes sense. I would restore Country Club to the current boundaries. I would take opinions from my colleagues on what to do with the 44th Street orphaned streets, and I know you'll have some feedback on that. And the other section I would change would be the other side of France Avenue, the little pocket neighborhood along the creek, that by its own resident feedback does not associate or has ever associated with the Chauvin Park area, and attach that to the Mini Haha Woods side of the creek, the same side of the creek. But the other side of France Avenue.
In both those instances, 44th Street and north of the creek, east of France, I would recommend a city conduct a direct survey of every household. I believe it's 50 north of 44th. I think it's a smaller number, so I understand there's a cost to it, but I think it's a rather minor cost, and those are two instances in which it appears that there are differences of opinion. What would be your thought about 50th Street, north of 50th Street? I believe, is it the Wooddale Circle?
Edina Court.
Edina Court. And the Baird House.
You could survey them, but it seems like the natural place for, I'd rather call them a shoulder block than a orphan.
Because it is my understanding that the, that the plan of treatment is something separate, and that those boundaries would not be impaired by that.
I think they think they're country.
I've still seen the comment that everybody else has, but it seems that 50th is a pretty big boundary.
So apart from those small nuanced changes, I would go forward with the boundary map, and if we need to continue it to do that survey, that's fine. I would then also adopt the policy with a few minor changes. Within a year of recognition, they can choose whatever brand they want for the neighborhood. So that is a moot point. If they want to rename it Hidden Valley instead of Mini Haha Woods, go for it. You have a year within your recognition date to do that on your own, without any interference from anybody. In terms of changing the boundaries, that undermines the selection of the system and the system goals to allow, to allow it to be fractionalized at the beginning. Instead, I would, I would go with the holding pattern. It's three years in the, in the association policy. It could even be something shorter. It could be two years. And go forward with this plan, and let's see how things evolve within those two years.
You mean as a pilot program?
As a pilot, and that's why I'm saying two years instead of three years, and let's, let's roll forward with it, and let's see how, how things evolve. We're never, we're never going to be able to see how effective this tool can be unless we give it a shot. And again, this was not a from-the-hip decision. This has been evolving, you said since 2001, at least since 2008, when I ran for council for the first time. It was a question in the forum, so it was already salient at that point. And then we talked about it almost right after I got into office. And the last thing I just want to say is, I look at my experience as a community organizer on a transportation issue, and I can see how having an association where I had lived would have helped to disseminate accurate information more efficiently to the neighborhood. Could have put together a neighborhood task force that would have been more representative, and I think would have led to a shorter, more effective process for the 70th Street planning, had this structure been in place.
Another area where it will become important, it's already been important, is with the airport noise and the flight pattern issue. And in fact, the southwest neighborhoods were, Edina was able, fortunately, to plug into organizational efforts that they were able to get off the ground very quickly in November, and information that they were able to disseminate very quickly, gather and disseminate. And they are conducting an effort right now that I'll speak about later this evening in council comments. But Edina neighborhoods are welcome to engage in that, and they can engage as individuals, but of course, it's much more efficient and effective to spread that information within a defined neighborhood.
That's another good point, and something I've often thought about, thinking about this vision of communication and engagement, is getting out of, getting the business of the city out of City Hall and into, closest to the constituent as you can. One thing mentioned in the policy is about a community liaison helping to facilitate these workshops. And how interesting and different will that be for staff to go out into the community, engage this neighborhood of 800 residents on an issue that is, that is important to them? You know, and to allow, to educate them, but also to engage them on an issue that's important to them, and get us out of City Hall and closer to where the services are being delivered.
All right, back to you.
Thanks. Couple of things in just listening. Establishing a neighborhood association for the purpose of improving communication can be done without involving a government-led structure on what the association has to be, and there can only be one in a neighborhood as described on a map. That's, if you have a group along, right along 70th Street, or going back into the community north or south of 70th Street, that is interested in the construction on 70th Street, that group can organize, that group can do what it needs to do to receive communication. You could be the neighborhood liaison, receive that communication from the city, send it out to that group. You don't have to be a recognized neighborhood association in a large, in that larger area in order to do that. So I see that as an unnecessary step. I think it does exclude. I think the, the policy does exclude by the very nature that a neighborhood association has to be recognized in order to establish that landing page, in order to establish that communication link with the city. It does exclude because associations who choose that, who choose not to change when they are, when they represent a small number of homes in Indian Hills with their, with their own issues, their own interests, and that's why they exist the way they do, that's why they're organized the way they do, they are excluded. So it does exclude, and I think that's, that is something that, that is, by its very nature, very wrong with this proposal. There is a mechanism to reach everyone. Can it be improved? Yes. Can everyone take a better advantage of it? Yes. But it does not, you don't need a neighborhood association to do it. Our neighborhood assoc... Are neighborhood associations a good thing? They absolutely are. We have an informal one in our, in our neighborhood. To call it an association would be, would be wrong. It's a group. It's a group. We keep each other informed, and we talk about a variety of things. And, and just stay up on things. But do we have tools that serve the entire city? We do. And I, I don't see that by establishing a city-recognized neighborhood association structure that dictates what the association has to be, how it needs to be formatted, who can be, who, who it has to serve, how inclusive it has to be, that's really up to the association. If it finds that it's not inclusive enough, it can change. But it doesn't need the city to have oversight in that, in that change. Just one other small point, and there was something in here about a speaker, and that staff would keep a list of speakers, and when requested, would contact that speaker to come to an association meeting. I don't think we need staff to do that. There are many better things for staff to do than to be arranging for a speaker to go to a neighborhood association meeting. So, I, I think there are things in here that are very good, but it goes beyond what is necessary.
Thank you. This has been one of the most content-rich conversations we've had in a long, long time on a, on a very interesting topic that started with the most laudable of purposes, and that was to be better communicators with our fellow residents. And I, and I think we've all experienced what we think has not been the greatest level of communication. Member Swenson said it well, I think, when people are calling us and saying, you know, hey, what's going on here? If we'd had some kind of a, a system in place to better communicate issues of import, I think we wouldn't have quite the, the level of angst or frustration that we see from some of the people that were, that were trying to help out with this thing. So, what we wanted to have be a positive experience for everyone hasn't really been a positive experience for everyone in our community. And, and some of these issues that I, I worried about, well, early on, I, I think I was a reluctant traveler as well. I, I had a little bit of a concern about the balkanization of our community, but recognizing that the overall purpose was better communication, and, and that maybe in the process, people would, would come together more in, in, in their individual neighborhoods and develop a greater sense of community, I thought those were good things. And I continue to think that those are good things. The issues that, that Member Brindle has raised of formal versus informal construct for a neighborhood association is an interesting one. And I think Member Bennett makes a pretty compelling argument about the quid pro quo in that. And that is that if, if you want us to be the most effective communicators we can be, we, we need to know who we're communicating with, and you've got to, you've got to operate on some standards that we, that we think are important, and, you know, non-discriminatory. We know that everybody's going to be looped in, that you're going to be communicating with everybody in that particular neighborhood. From a, from a mapping standpoint, two things really to talk about, I guess. How does our town look in terms of the map and all this hard work that some of our folks in our community did on a totally volunteer basis? I understand all the reasons they did what they did. I share the, the same opinion as Member Swenson and Member Sprague with respect to Sunny Slope and Country Club. I think there are reasons to, to follow those historic lines and, and those historic neighborhood designations from a geography standpoint, and have them be separate. Now, I don't think that's the only neighborhoods we're going to hear from, because some don't know exactly what's going on here yet, but I'm getting calls from people. I'm getting calls from people in Hilldale. I know as soon as all the people in Rolling Green come back from Florida, I'll hear from them, or somebody will. So, one of the things that concerns me is, in the policy, you can't change the boundary for three years. And, and I'd like to have some further council discussion or thought about that. Maybe not tonight, maybe in a work session. I don't think there's any immediacy to any of this thing, because I think this policy requires some, 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 some extensive work yet. So, you know, from a boundary change standpoint, I'd prefer the exact opposite of what we've got here. We've got a three-year waiting period, and then it has to be done by formal action, and the association has to, to be able to do that, to, to, to perform that action. I like giving people in these neighborhoods a year to come forward. At least, that's my initial thought, is give them a year to come forward with an idea for a boundary change. And if they want to carve themselves out, if Hilldale wants to carve itself out of, out of Todd Park, well, then let's, let's have that conversation. Let's get that done. I, I am sensitive to Member Swenson's comments that there ought to be some minimum contiguous geographic or parcel size to a neighborhood. And I don't know what that is, and that's why I think a council discussion would be worthwhile. And, and incidentally, for me, if we're going to set up this communication system, I don't care if we're communicating with 40 neighborhoods or 60 neighborhoods. I want to make sure that people have a, a good feeling about this. So, if, if Rolling Green says, hey, we'd rather be Rolling Green, not Interlochen, and we've got other folks in other neighborhoods, provided they meet a certain minimum size, they want to be called a particular neighborhood, that's fine with me personally. The, the name change would kind of go hand in hand then with a boundary change for me, at least for discussion purposes with my fellow council members. I'd like to do it either through a work session, or maybe if we decide, if the majority decides tonight that we need to, to move on this, that we think about this in a limited, a more limited way in terms of a pilot program. You got me thinking about that when you mentioned that. And maybe it has a finite life, and we try it to see if it works or not.
I, if I may.
Maybe that's not what you meant.
No, if I may, I, I think that what I, what I wanted to note tonight was, was there consensus on the need for this mechanism? Because this is a tool, and there is consensus. Now, the question is, how do we shape that tool? So, we do, we do best shaping policy in work sessions. It's hard to do from the dais, because there are many nuances to this. I think, first of all, thank you to the committee and, and Assistant Manager Kurt for all the work that went into this, because I believe you've delivered us something we can work with. And it was a lot of work, so thank you very much to you and your committee. But I say now, now that they've handed it off, we go in, and we, as you said, we finesse it, and we work, make it work for the city of Edina. And the best format for that would be a work session. So, I would move to table this matter to a work session to be scheduled by Manager Neil.
All right, good. I like that direction myself. We've got a motion to second to table this for a future work session to be set by Manager Neil. Discussion on that issue? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Good. All right. Now, the next thing on our agenda is 8E, which is the City Manager Employment Agreement. And by state law, and I think Manager Neil and Attorney Knutson, we of course had a closed session on the 29th of January with Manager Neil regarding his continued employment with the city of Edina. We, we gave him our comments with regard to his job performance. Those were done in a setting that was legally appropriate, I think. Attorney Knutson, you may opine on that. All right.
Correct.
And, and we, we talked about all kinds of issues that were job-related. And without going to any specific detail, I will tell folks that are watching, either in the audience or at home, that we are going to continue this relationship, at least offer that relationship be continued. We worked on a, a modification of his existing contract to cover the next two years. And we have that contract in front of us this evening. It's been worked on, looked at and worked on by the entire council. And I think we've come up with something with Manager Neil, who also worked diligently on it and, and made several adjustments, I must say, that I think were very beneficial for other employees in the city as well in terms of setting an example for, for, for how things need to work in the future. So.
Can I comment on that?
Member Swenson.
When we talked about issues, our, it sounds like a bad girlfriend with issues. So, at least in our family, then when we talk about issues. I just want to clarify that we talked about different areas of performance and how we felt about Scott's in those areas. And it certainly was a very positive conversation. So, I don't ever want to make the comments be misread that it wasn't a positive conversation. It was very weak.
Yeah, thanks for making that comment, and I, I think.
I'm oversensitive to the word issues. It's been a.
We, we are.
We talked about his issues. We resolved the issues.
I'm going to jump in the little, little lake. Well, we're very happy we hired him, and we're very happy he wants to continue to work here. That's the key thing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You haven't gotten there yet, so.
No, but you did a good job of prompting me to get there. So, we have a, a contract in front of us this evening. We need to take some formal action in terms of approving the proposed employment agreement with City Manager Scott Neal, and Manager Neal, your comments as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I enjoy working here, and I appreciate the opportunity to keep working here under your leadership of the council. There, there is one material, I distributed a, a, an edited version. It incorporates the edits that, or the suggestions that the council made at the closed session. There are two, there are two additional edits, grammatical changes that Councilmember Bennett identified, one on page two and one on page four, that are not made in this, but will be made on the, on the final clean copy. But there is a material change to the document. You asked me to, to have the city attorney review the document. He did. And that material change is on page three, and it's under item C. It's the highlighted language. It adds a, a control onto that language. It says, "but to exceed an employer contribution of one-half of the available elected permit, deferral permitted per year per employee under IRS code." There's a quirk in Minnesota law pertaining to this particular issue, and this is, it's a, it adds a cap onto what the city's liability might be. Under the language that was included in this agreement that was in the council packet, there wasn't a cap on it. Now, there, there needs to be by state code, and so that's the only difference.
And I would move this employment agreement with the additional of the cap language and the two grammatical corrections that Member Bennett found.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome back for two years. Thanks.
Two more years.
Two more years. All right, now, the next two matters are yours on the agenda. The first one is City of Edina Public Schools partnership goals. And you've been meeting regularly with, you, you and some of our other staff members, meeting regularly with the school district superintendent, some of his staff. And you've come up with some joint goals for 2013.
We have. Thank you, Your Honor. This, this is item number 8F, and it is the joint partnership goals between the city of Edina and the Edina Public Schools. And as I referenced in the cover memo, that's, these are partnership goals that arrive jointly between the superintendent and myself. We've reviewed these with the management staff, leadership staff from both organizations. We meet together twice a year, and we go over the progress of, of these partnership goals. Both the superintendent and I find that there are advantages and to have them endorsed by our respective organizations, so that, he has already submitted this list to the school board, and they endorsed it, and so I'm doing the same with the council tonight.
All right, thank you. Questions? Member Sprague.
Thank you, yes. A transportation commissioner emailed and, and mentioned that there might be safe routes to school as another point of cooperation, and that, that we might want to add that to this document.
We have safe routes to school as one of our work plan items, and we have discussed that with the school district as well. Because I, because they have already approved this, I'm.
That was my next question. Has the school board already adopted this?
They have. So, so I would say it's probably going to be incorporated under one of these general headings, but it is in our work plan for, to accomplish in 2013.
As long as everyone's aware that that's in the work plan, then, then the, the goal is met.
It is.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion? Member Bennett.
I'll move it, but I'm just noting, I don't think. I don't really see an area that it seems to fit well in. We talk about community recreational facilities, youth life challenges doesn't apply. So, what I would like to recommend is not seeing actually a category to plug this into, understanding that it's on the council's work plan. I would like this to be taken up in either a future administration-level meeting between the two, and, and then brought back for a brief, a quick amendment, or something that we can take up in our next joint meeting with the school board, if that's going to be occurring sooner.
No problem. It's a good idea.
Thank you.
There could be transportation-related language that covers a broad spectrum of things that we're working on that aren't identified.
Yes, but I will move this as it stands tonight.
Second, so I hear you saying, we'll move this for now, and then we can do an amended version in the next cycle.
Yes, recognizing the importance of the point you raised. Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And next, does the memorandum of understanding with the Edina Crime Prevention Fund fall into the Arts Fall Festival?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I describe a, a bit of what we're trying to accomplish in the cover memo for this item. Really, it just comes down to the fact that the Fall into the Arts Festival has, has always been, but is a complex event, a very large event, that really does take a lot of cooperation between private parties, crime fund board members, and, and city staff. There, the expectations of each other are important. It's important that we know whose rights and responsibilities are what in order to carry out this festival as effectively as we can. So, that's really what we've been trying to get at with this agreement, because the Edina Crime Fund Prevention, or Edina Crime Prevention Fund is a separate nonprofit organization. So, they do employ folks to organize this with us, and we want to make sure that we've made some obligations to them, they make some obligations to us, and that we've just got a clear agreement. So, this has been under discussion with the, with Parks and Rec staff, and Police Department staff, and Crime Fund Board members for probably a little over a year. And they have approved it at the board level. Councilmember Brindle was part of that. She can comment on that. But I'm asking the council to approve this document as proposed. It was prepared by the city attorney, and as I said before, already approved by the Crime Fund Board.
Thank you. Member Bennett.
Thank you. Manager Neil, question about wording in a couple of places. Under facilities, the last line states that the Crime Prevention Fund shall return the park to the city no more than 12 hours after the completion of the festival. Since it's my understanding that the city will maintain or retain ownership of the park during the festival, I would really prefer a different wording to that. I don't know if it's.
Restore? Is that what?
Well, it's, it's more in the nature of, it's not that they are returning the park to the city. It's that they're vacating their use, or, or restoring full use of the park. Just something that doesn't imply that there's been any shift of ownership with it.
I think the words you just said are perfect, and that's restore the use, full use of the park no more than 12 hours.
After the completion of the festival.
Is, is no more than 12, no more than 12 hours.
It's a quick cleanup.
Yeah, well, you could still leave, leave the word return there, and just put in full use of.
Or within 12 hours.
Within, within.
Yeah, Mayor, that's, that's clean.
I'm sorry, what was your?
Return full use of the park to the city.
Shall restore or return full use of the park? Yeah. I think we're all on the same page about that. I also had a question under reimbursable expenses, first line. Crime Prevention Fund shall reimburse the city for expenses it. Is it referring to Crime Prevention Fund, or is it referring to the city? Given the rest of the sentence, I think it's referring to the city, but it would. but it would be clearer if it was specified as that rather than.
So replace it with the city?
For expenses. The city incurs on behalf of the crime, and then, um.
Where, what, which one?
Paragraph five.
Okay. It's reimbursable expenses, line one, it, at the end of the line, which is referring to the city, but it's unclear. Page three, severability, 16E, needs an S after becomes unenforceable or invalid. And then last questions are back to page one, five, again reimbursable expenses, line one, two, three, four, five. Use of the word will instead of shall. And same thing under operational support, line one, the city will provide office space. There seems to be an interchange between the use of shall and the use of will, and I'd just like to see it consistent. Um, does will have a legal, a different legal meaning, Your Honor? It seems to me that it implies more of a level of volition than shall, which seems to be imperative.
You want the terminology to be mandatory in this circumstance.
Then I would recommend shall in other instances.
I think, uh, shall is a better word to be using to create mandatory obligation.
If you want to use the modern word, you no longer use shall, you use must. That's, sometimes people debate one of that.
I went to law school too long ago.
You have to do find and replace a few times to get that one.
Okay. So, Member Brindle, do you want to comment on this at all?
I would. Um, paragraph four, park rental fees. I'd just like to add some clarification to that. What the paragraph says is the Edina Crime Prevention Fund shall pay no park rental fee to the city so long as the fund contributes a minimum of $3,000 to the city each fiscal year. And to give you an idea of what the fund does contribute to the city, I have a list for 2013. So, just so you know, uh, beyond the badge is $3,000. Bicycle patrol is $5,393. Business patrol, $2,500. Citizens Academy, $250. Cornelia Summer Program, $1,500. The Police Explorers, $2,000. General support to the police department, $4,000. K-9 support, $13,825. And Night to Unite of $300. So these are dollars that basically get budgeted, uh, pretty much from year to year.
What's the total?
Uh, the total is $32,768.
Well, let's put that number in there.
Well, we figured, um, because we talked about that paragraph, we figured we'd let it stand because I don't think there's ever going to be a year, nor does the fund board think there will be, ever be a year that we're even coming down far enough to come close to that figure.
And 3,000 is a fair rental?
That's where the number came from. It would have been the rough equivalent to the rental that they would have been charged.
The insurance amounts that are included here, um, are, um, I think Roger Knutson took a look at them and said that's what they need to be. And that's, uh, representative of what, um, insurance amounts are for an event such as this. So that was, uh, reviewed by the fund as well.
All right.
And the fund board, uh, did pass the memorandum of, of understanding unanimously. There are other MOUs in place in our city. There's one between the Edina Community Foundation and the Fourth of July Parade Committee. The parade is an enormous endeavor. So that MOU sets out who does what, who's responsible for what. And, um, and in this case, um, that's what this MOU does. Uh, one last comment, and that is that city staff does work on this particular day. And what happens is they report their hours and they, a, an invoice is prepared from, from the, from the city, provided to the fund and the fund pays for those city staffing hours.
Okay, good. It's good to know. All right. Um, have we got a motion on this?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, just with regard to, um, number eight. It says, the fund shall not use city branding marks without the consent of the city. What's the intent of that? I mean, have they, do they use the mark and then they, I mean, what's the usual practice?
The practice would be if they intend to use the city's logo or other city branding marks, that they would confer with the communications department to make sure they're using those marks properly.
Okay, and have they?
Size and colors, et cetera.
Your brand regulations. Have they used them in the past?
Uh, they have.
Okay. Thanks.
Probably only on the marketing materials.
I'm gonna vote this. I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. All right. And then we have, uh, we added to the agenda, Agenda eight H, which is a board commission-related matter. And I don't know if Member Swenson or Member Bennett wants to take the lead on this.
Yes, I move the removal of Commissioner Lisa Pines' request for grantee forgiveness.
I'll second that. And I'll call the question.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Abstentions? Aye. All right. On to correspondence petitions. Anything else that we, that you brought with you this evening that we haven't seen, anything on the dials that we need to be, we need to have our attention called to? Okay. Uh, Mayor and Council comments? I think we're starting with Member Brindle this week.
All right. I have four. Um, I, along with Mayor Hovland and Member Sprague. I think there was just the three of us at the Educa, Edina Education Fund Show and Tell Luncheon, uh, yesterday. And the work of the Ed Fund is very impressive. We're fortunate to have skilled and dedicated teachers who are bringing bright futures to our, our students. This is, uh, kind of an expo format where you go around the room and see these various projects that are, that have been made possible through grants from the Edina Education Fund. Uh, Edina Morningside Rotary Club and Edina Rotary Club are collaborating on an international grant project in Panama. And this is, this is, uh, something that, uh, that I'm kind of a driving force in. And it's partnering with a Rotary Club in Panama. And there will be four containers that leave. And these are containers like you see on a ship, the, the back of a semi, each filled with hospital and clinic equipment that are going to be installed, uh, that's going to be installed in clinics and hospitals in the Cherokee Province of Panama. The first of four containers left yesterday. So we're all very excited that this is underway. Planning to travel down there in March and see, see the project from the other end and meet some of the Rotarians in Panama. Southwest Beyond the Yellow Ribbon met on January 31st at the Elks Lodge in Hopkins. We had a great meeting. Must have been 25 people there at least. And we are starting, uh, the action plan is, is 12 sections. And we worked on the first of those 12 sections the other night and it was city leadership and government. And so basically what that is, and we have a template provided to us by the National Guard. And, uh, we are filling out this template with what is going on in our cities that already currently supports veterans and military families in our communities. So, uh, so filling out each of those sections. So each month we're focusing on one of those sections. So that we can, uh, get pretty close to having a filled out rough draft at the end of the year and then, um, tighten it up and be proclaimed, uh, a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon City. And this coalition is six cities. So we are doing this on behalf of all cities together. This, uh, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon is the largest community effort to support military families and veterans since World War II. And then Edina ABC will be the beneficiary of proceeds from a, uh, special performance at the Dakota Jazz Club on Tuesday, February 19th. Delphi O'Marsalis Quintet, uh, Delphi O'Marsalis is a trombonist, uh, will perform beginning at seven o'clock that evening. Tickets are $75. And if you want to experience a concert with one of the Marsalis family, don't delay. I'm sure it'll sell out. So, uh, we have a council meeting that night. So we won't be there. And I sent Sheila Carrington, the executive director of Edina ABC, a note and said, sorry, we, we won't be there, but we'll be thinking of you. But it'll be a great night for Edina ABC.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Um, just several items largely calendar. Um, first of all, the State of the Community address is not on our, um, formal meeting agenda, but that is Monday, the fourth of March. Here it's, the reason that I know this is because the Steering Committee of the Morningside Neighborhood Association was setting up its March Steering Committee meeting and encountered a date that one of the members had State of the Community address noted. And the assumption that it's here at City Hall at seven o'clock, um, and the association steering committee would like to attend as a group and possibly Monday the fourth. Thank you, Mary. Um, and hold its Steering Committee meeting in the mayor's conference room following the address. They'll be trying to reserve that. Um, another neighborhood-related issue, but also the wider world of airplane noise. Manager Neal and I attended a meeting last Monday of the Southwest Airport Advisory Team. They will be renaming themselves. This is a coalition or consortium of Southwest Minneapolis neighborhoods, um, that is forming to provide a conduit for information and, um, the monitoring of meetings and developments on the airplane, um, the airport noise issue. And again, that was an initial meeting, January 28th at Lynnhurst Park in Minneapolis. Their next meeting is Monday, February 25th at 7:00 PM, also at Lynnhurst Park. There is convenient parking available. I'm hoping that in time we will have our own structure of neighborhood associations and be able to disseminate this information, um, easily throughout the community. At this point, I am telling individuals I know are interested about it. Um, but, um, it leads to my second, uh, calendar item, which is that Manager Neal, Mayor Hovland and I, the next day, attended a Transportation Policy Committee meeting in the House of Representatives at the state Capitol. This was organized by Representative Earhart, who sent notice by email to everyone who had contacted him individually by email, but again, without a neighborhood network to contact, it's difficult to get word out about something like this. So there were residents from the community present and they were, um, Representative Earhart did provide time during the meeting for them to speak. Um, the comments largely were made by, um, Jeff Hamill, who is the Director of the Metropolitan Airports Commission. Also Mayor Hovland spoke, but I won't speak for him on that. One of my biggest takeaways, I learned a lot at the meeting, as I did also on Monday night. And the biggest takeaway for me is that there is a difference between the technology and the routing. And that our NAV, um, this C-GPS type style or type method of airplane navigation may well be the wave of the future. It doesn't mean that we have to narrow the tracks of the planes of, um, for departures and arrivals over our community to the two or three tracks that have been recommended, but, but we can look at perhaps what is being done in other cities. And again, Mayor Hovland, I think, mentioned 12 tracks with the city of Atlanta. Last night attended, um, I regret that I was not able to attend the Ed Fund Lunch, but I did last evening attend a meeting, um, of the Community Education Services Coalition. They are, um, they heard from Dick Morris, who has been engaged in a project of correlating city surveys with school district surveys to, um, find where there are strengths, um, and how community education participants feel about their school districts, whether that participation enhances their opinions and affiliations with their school districts and also whether it enhances and strengthens their affiliations with their city. And the finding is yes, that they do. Much higher degree, uh, responses in terms of people feeling informed, uh, people feeling satisfied or delighted with the quality of life in their community and also, um, with, uh, people feeling that they are informed about city government and its activities. So those were correlations that we're good to hear about. Also attended the Residential Reconstruction Forum, both of them, the Thursday night, um, with Member Swenson, last Thursday, and then, um, a Saturday morning, um, the, uh, reporting period with Mayor Hovland. And I, congratulations to staff and to the Planning Commission Committee that was holding these events. They were really well done. I think that people felt that they had a chance to speak. Uh, people will be looking forward eagerly to the, um, results and the answers that come out of these, um, meetings. But people were pleased that the meetings were held and with their chance to speak. And finally, um, there is a major sewer project interceptor, uh, yes, you too. Okay. Uh, sanitary, it's sanitary sewer because it's Met Council and, um, Southwest Minneapolis Interceptor Rehabilitation Project. Member Swenson, do you want to speak to this? Tuesday, February 12th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Linden Hills Recreation Center in Minneapolis.
I'll add a few things to that. Are you, are you done?
I'm done. So, thank you.
I think it would be really important. It's contiguous only to our community along France Avenue. However, it's, um, a sewer line that in many areas is going to have to be open, cut and replaced. And where you see little water pipes going when we replace water with a sewer replacement like this, they actually have to run sewer pipes like that. And some of these houses are not going to have sewer taken away from them for a number of days, three to five, I think it said, and they will have to be put up in other places, the families that live there. So I, I think we just have to be aware that it's happening contiguous to our community. And will it affect houses in, on the Edina side of France? Yeah. So again, let's repeat the time of that meeting, which was Tuesday, February 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Linden Hills Recreation Center, which is right on the corner of Cirque du Soleil and 43rd. All the rest of us attended last Friday morning our local MLC meeting, um, where we had our state representatives and senators, with us talking about what's happening in the legislature. This is Eden Prairie, Bloomington, Edina, St. Louis Park.
Maple Grove.
Maple Grove, Plymouth. Um, and it was a really interesting meeting. It was at Bremer. And of course, the Bremer site is beautiful even when it's 20 below. I'm done.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank all my peers and my constituents for, um, allowing me to serve on council because I've discovered there's some connection, connection between serving on council and your immune system. In the last three weeks in my household, we've had two flus, four colds, two ear infections, one sinus infection, one botul bronchitis, one undefined virus, and I have got nothing. So, thank you. Secondly, I enjoyed the Ed Fund Luncheon.
Maybe after you do the polar plunge, it'll be a different story. You and Manager Neal.
But I, actually, the, the polar plunge adds 10 years to your life, but that's a whole nother topic. Um, the Ed Fund Luncheon was wonderful. I.
I think it means your life passes before your eyes when you go in the water. That's, you got that mixed up.
The Ed Fund Luncheon was wonderful. I, I met a, um, a few new, um, newcomers to Edina, new residents. And, uh, I mentioned, I send out a council blast after every council meeting. And if anyone's interested in receiving that newsletter, you can just email me at josh@jospsprague.com, um, to get on that list. And then I also, uh, met, uh, a lady who lived over in Countryside, who had, had watched the banter about the polar plunge event to benefit the Special Olympics in Minnesota, which is done with the, the teams the police department put together. And, uh, she felt very strongly that Manager Neal should participate. So it's not just me, it's our constituents. And, um, and then thirdly, oh, my calendar item was March 9th. And that's the day in which we jump into the icy cold water and get 10 years added to our life by the polar ferry. So lots of good things ahead. And with that, I will give it to the mayor.
All right. Thank you. Um, well, Member Bennett mentioned that, uh, we had this, uh, hearing in the, in the House. It was actually set up by Representative Earhart, who is, of course, returning to the legislature after, what, a four-year absence, I think. And, uh, so we're going to give him comeback legislator of the decade award.
Six years.
Six years. Six years. So he's, he's Chair of the House Transportation Policy Committee. He did a, uh, uh, kind of a primer on MAC, on the MAC for his members. And then we were able to come and, and listen. Part of, the last sort of it, I would say, Jeff Hamill talked about the. Part of, the last third of it, I would say, Jeff Hamill talked about the airline flight patterns issue in Edina and the next wave of, or the next generation of technology that'll control flights. Then we were able, as Member Bennett said, to, some of our residents were able to ask questions and, and make comments, and then they asked me to make some comments as well. So, a lot of folks in our community interested in this issue, ran into Julie Baker yesterday from over in Country Club, and she had a good idea, and Scott Neil and I talked about it today, and that was to get something up on our website about, about this issue, so people can pick up information in a hurry. So, that'll be part of City Extra that people can sign up for. Done, good. MLC breakfast was good, Member Swenson mentioned that. Manager Neil and I had breakfast on Monday morning with Chuck Moody from Fairview Systems to talk about the trauma center issue. They want to build a new trauma center, as all of you know, at the hospital, and we've got, they want us to take a bit of a role there. We have to decide if that's a good idea or not as we move along here, so that's coming up. And then that same afternoon as the MLC breakfast, I met with legislators down in Bloomington with regard to the future of ship funding, which is something that we've come to rely on. So, stay tuned on that as well. I think we got a good reception on there, had a good team from Bloomington talking about it. And then the, just a couple of other quick notations. The day that Member Bennett and I were at the meeting at the Senior Center with regard to the issue of how much house should you build in a 50-foot lot, and getting community input, from there, I went over to the high school, and the robotics team had a open house in the Edina Performing Arts Center. You, you can't believe what these young people are doing. They're building a robot that shoots frisbees through a slot 10 feet up in the air. It's got to be able to climb some stuff. They get CAD, they're doing CAD, work on a, you know, a CAD basis on the computer. I ran into two students, one's a sophomore, one's a junior, they're sitting over in a corner on the computer, they're writing the program for the robot. And it just, it's just amazing what these young people are doing. Really, got to be proud of these kids and support them, so it's fantastic. And then, Sunday, the 7th grade A team in basketball won the Edina Classic, and they've only lost two games this year. They got a great basketball team. So, if you get a chance, I don't, I guess they're probably done at Edina now, there'll be some other tournaments around, but they, they are really quite a team. So, that's it for me, Manager Neil. And then we'll go to the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do need to have a brief discussion with you about the board and commission interviews and, and provision of food, I believe, right?
Thank you, Manager Neil. I'm going to hand down first a schedule of your interviews, and then a packet of the three applications that came in after the council packet went out last week. And then, the last thing I'm handing you is a spreadsheet of all of the interviews. And I have to apologize, on Thursday night, you will be interviewing 14 applicants. On Monday, the 11th, you will be interviewing 17 applicants. And on Wednesday, the 20th, an additional 17. You ended up with 48 applicants. One gentleman applied and does not yet live in the Edina. He's not moving until May, and I said that we would consider his application for future openings after he came in. There were two applications that came in after the deadline, one today and one late yesterday. But you have such a long meeting, and in the past, I've gotten you pizza, but that's usually because you were done by 7:15 or so. Now, you're not going to be done till 8:00, and I didn't think you needed to wait until 8:00?
Definitely make it till 8:00.
I know, I thought I would, my offer was to go buy some fruit and cheese and crackers, and you can have that, so you can, or would you like to have box dinners delivered?
Are you saying we're going to have a first course and a second course?
Well, if you want snacks during, snacks during the, during the interviews and pizza at the end, I can do that.
And then pizza?
Yeah.
That sounds wonderful. I am totally ready for that.
We're going to base this around, Josh, and so.
All right.
All right. A couple of airport items. One is, and it was my, it was my hope that we would have this ready for you tonight, but it was, we're giving some help on putting some comments together for the, something called the FONSI ROD, which is an acronym, F-O-N-S-I hyphen R-O-D. It stands for Finding of No Significant Impact Record of Decision. And this is the process that the MAC is, is using to, to take public comment on the, on RNAV. We have solicited some assistance in putting together some comments, and will submit them. They'll be consistent with everything that I've heard from the council to date on that issue. But the deadline is, is the 8th of February, which is Friday. On February 19th, the council has, I think, been aware that we had had an offer from, from the Metropolitan Airports Commission to send representatives to talk to the council about the, the work of the MAC, the work of the Noise Oversight Committee, and answer some questions. Chad Luckway and John Bergman are, have agreed to do that. They've agreed to do that at the council's next meeting on February 19th. So, we have invited them to do a special presentation to the council, given them some counsel, I guess, on, on how long to take and, and what subjects to be prepared for. But they will be here at the next council meeting to answer some questions.
And Manager Neil, will you be able to notify the members of the SWAT, the South West?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
The new normal, the ULI New Normal Work, Workshop is a week from tonight at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center, not here. And there'll be a brief meal that accompanies that.
So, the agenda's incorrect, then?
The, the agenda is incorrect on, on what's in front of you tonight, so Senior Center at 6:00 PM. I'm going to be speaking at our, our financial advisor, the Ellers and Associates, does an annual training session for their, for their clients. I'm going to be speaking as part of a group, talking about our TIF policy, and specifically the, the TIF agreement and the discussions that we went through with the Southdale Mall and with Simon. I'm going to be doing that on Thursday. Finally, on Thursday, I'm going to be going to the retirement event for Tom Hedges. Tom Hedges is somebody you may not probably know, but Tom is the city administrator for the city of Eagan. He happens to have been the only city administrator in the history of the city of Eagan, because he was the first one. So, he's been there for 36 years or so. He's really a, a very nice man, very kind to me when I came to the state in 1996, very well-respected. Eagan's not always an easy place to work, kind of, lots of politics there over the years, and Tom has survived that and, and worked well with people of all political stripes. And he's really a great person, and we wish him well in retirement. That's all I have.
Thank you. I, I've got one other thing I forgot to talk about that I need your input on. As you know, I'm Chair of the MLC, that's 16 cities in organization this year, and then there are other things in the region that I'm also chairing or working actively on. And I feel like I'm getting stretched a little bit thin, so I had, had this conversation with Mary at Rotary about the 494 Corridor Commission and our membership on the 494 Corridor Commission. Would she be interested in taking my place on the 494 Corridor Commission as a city representative? We've also got a staff representative there. But I, I bring it to all of you, because if there are other folks that are interested, we should know that, and so that we can have a discussion about it, or, or, you know, make a decision, not necessarily tonight, but if someone else has a burning interest to serve on the 494 Corridor Commission, I don't want to cut them off from participation.
They meet at 7:30 in the morning, don't they?
7:30 in the morning, you're just kind of, what?
Sometimes I'm just finishing work.
Just finishing up whatever you're doing, yeah. You could go, before you go to bed.
I think we'll make to support Mary for that position.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks. Well, that's it. Let's adjourn the council meeting, and we'll call the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority to order, meeting the authority to order, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair Hovland?
Here. First matter of business is approval of minutes of the HRA regular meeting of January 22nd. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second on approval of those minutes from January 22nd, 2013. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And now, Manager Neil, do you want to lead this off, or do you want to just bring?
While, while Mr., while Mr. Nundorf makes his way to the front, I'll, I'll tee it up for you. The council's had a number of, of closed and open discussions about the proposal to purchase 3930 West 49th and a Half Street. You authorized staff to begin a, a negotiation with the property owner, which we did. Our economic development manager, Bill Nundorf, handled those negotiations along with, with some legal assistance and with the assistance of Mr. Jack Rice. We're here tonight to present to you the completed purchase agreement that the property owner has agreed to, and, and we believe we have agreed to all the, the material conditions of the, of the agreement as well. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Nundorf, and he can fill in any blanks from that description.
All right, good. Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Nundorf, welcome.
Thanks. I'll just touch on a couple of the key points in the purchase agreement. As, as we all know, we've been talking about parking improvements at 50th and France for quite some time. Without having land to actually build parking improvements, it's tough to get something accomplished. So what we present tonight is, is the first opportunity to acquire a piece of property to expand the parking options at, at the, at the corner. The purchase agreement this evening has some basic terms in it. The parcel itself is currently occupied by the Edina Realty Branch Office on 49th and a Half Street. The tenant has announced their decision to relocate across the street, a few doors down, coming up this spring. So that creates a vacancy in this building and an opportunity to purchase without, without displacing an existing business. So, the terms that we've negotiated are a purchase price of no more than $2.65 million for the property. The closing would occur in June of 2013. Between now and, and the closing, we have a due diligence period to do additional studies about, about environmental conditions on the property, to do a study in case there's any asbestos that needs to be removed, and also to complete an appraisal to justify the, the sales price. One of the other conditions is that the tenant must be vacant, vacant from the building before the city would actually close on the property. So with, with that in mind, that's a general, the general terms, as far as financing this purchase, if we decide to do that this evening, we anticipate to use TIF monies that are currently available in the Southeast Edina Redevelopment District, and then leaving the option open to repay that TIF monies by incurring long-term debt to pay off the, the purchase price. So a couple of options there, and our financial consultants will help guide us as far as which option makes the most sense as we get closer to closing. So those are the general terms. I'm happy to an, answer any questions. Jim Nelson, the property owner, and Jack Rice are also here this evening if you have any questions for them.
All right. Questions for Mr. Nundorf, for either Mr. Nelson or Mr. Rice? This is something that we've been discussing and working on for quite a while. So, otherwise, entertain a motion.
I'm going to move this.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2013-02 authorizing the purchase agreement for property at 3930 West 49 and a Half Street.
Can I comment for one minute?
Further discussion, comment? Go ahead.
Well, when we talked about this at our final close session before we did this today, I think the most interesting thing is, one, we need parking up there. Two, it's a building that its tenant was leaving, and it's contiguous to our northern parking lot. So all in all, it's like everything fell in place at the right time. So I'm really excited for this opportunity for that business section and, and for our residency in Edina, who often tell me that they get frustrated with the parking up there. So I'm relieved and also pleased to have Mr. Nelson be so accommodating in selling us this building, even though we're paying him good money for it.
All right, other comments? Member Bennett?
Many thanks to everybody who's worked on it, because I think it is a real problem-solving endeavor, and it's, I think, something that's going to serve the community well, great public purpose.
Thank you. I also want to thank Jack Rice, who's guided the city on this process, done a terrific job. Just one great job after another for, for our town, the town he lives in, so much appreciated. And as Mr. Rice pointed out, it was the first time in 33 years this property's been available, and, and the timing couldn't be better. So I think we're making a very judicious acquisition here to make sure our downtown in Edina stays very viable in the future. And Mr. Nelson, thank you very much for your high level of professionalism in dealing with us in this time period where we've been working on a potential acquisition. It's much appreciated. All right, we need to vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Thank you. All right, and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting is adjourned.